This is the public hearing of the committee at a hold regarding Bills Number 170195, 170196, 170197, and Resolution Number 170213. Mr. Stitt, please read the titles of the bills and resolution.
Bill Number 170195, in order to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2018 through 2023 inclusive. Bill Number 170196, in order to adopt a fiscal 2018 capital budget. Bill Number 170197, in order to adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2018. Resolution Number 170213, resolution providing for the approval by the council of the city of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the city of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2018 through 2022 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2017, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the mayor on January 3, 1992. Bill Number 1563-A by in-between the city and the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Stitt. Today we continue the public hearing of the committee at a hold to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2018, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2018 through fiscal 2023. Today, we will hear testimony from the following city departments: First Judicial District, District Attorney's Office, Law Department, Defender Association, and not going to talk about later on because we will have public testimony, and that will be a hearing within itself. Mr. Stitt, the first person to testify is...
Honorable Sheila Wood Skipper.
Thank you. Your honor, please come forth.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of this remarkable and wonderful city council. As you know, my name is Sheila Wood Skipper, and I am privileged to address you today as Chair of the First Judicial District Administrative Governing Board and President-Judge of the Court of Common Pleas. I am here representing my colleagues on the Administrative Governing Board, who include the Honorable Marcia Nyfield, President-Judge of Municipal Court, the Honorable Jacqueline Allen, Administrative Judge of the Trial Division, the Honorable Margaret Murphy, Administrative Judge of the Family Division, the Honorable Matthew Caraffiello, Administrative Judge of Orphans Court, and the Honorable Gary Glazer, Administrative Judge for the Traffic Division. Also in attendance with me is Mr. Joe Evers, our District Court Administrator, and Kevin Cross, Deputy Court Administrator for Financial Services, here to answer questions from member of council concerning our budget requests. I will note that I have been asked to keep this testimony very brief, and I certainly will accommodate that request, and ask that you refer to the detailed written testimony that has been presented to you by the First Judicial District. I will start, however, by just recognizing that the judiciary is an independent branch of government whose mission is to adjudicate cases according to jurisdiction and to ensure fair, timely, and accessible justice to the citizens and litigants in here in Philadelphia. Our system enables every litigant to receive their day in court, whether through our innovative specialty courts, progressive diversion programs, or our convenient online court access, our multifaceted reentry programs, and by implementing best practices in family and youth services. These proactive initiatives, coupled with our high level of judicial commitment and productivity, enable the court to meet many societal needs and enhance the lives of the citizens of Philadelphia. In this brief testimony, I will highlight how the judiciary contributes to the budget, how we remain a physically responsible partner in government, and how we invest in our workplace, our clients, our constituents, our justice partners, in our facilities, and in outcomes. These investments are achieved by implementing new initiatives while not seeking additional funds in our budget, creating efficiencies within our justice system, and providing accessible services to our citizens and those in need. Our budget request for fiscal year 2018 is $161,466,092 million, and consists of $111.4 million for the general fund and $50 million for grants revenue, and is awaiting your approval. In large measure, this $161 million budget request is paid for by the court system itself. In fact, the FJD generates $49 million that is credited to the general fund from filing fees, $31 million from fines and costs, and $16 million from reimbursement. In addition, the FJD saves the city and its agencies nearly $4.6 million annually by waiving filing fees in the Court of Common Pleas and Municipal Court, as well as $3.2 million in law library fees. Thus, as a consequence, the total request of $161 million, in reality, is only a request for $55.9 million, which really is less than 1.3% of the overall general budget for the city. I should also remind you that for the last three years, we have not requested any additional funds in our budget, and this budget-neutral request can generate budget savings while we implement new programs and ideas. So in keeping this short, again, I will refer you to the written testimony and just outline for you some of the things that we have been working on or have achieved. For instance, we create better access by having web-based job applications where people can apply online, and we received over 11,000 applications for that. We still have electronic filing for payments and fees, and also where individuals can status their cases, jury duty, and payment of fines and costs. In terms of new initiatives, we are working towards the creation or the discussion about having day reporting centers as a willingness to an additional initiative, and we're working hopefully with city council to formalize this endeavor, and CJAB has actually developed a subcommittee to work on recommendations on how we should proceed, and also working with city council's Criminal Justice Reform Committee. We also now have access to Wi-Fi in both the Family Court and Criminal Court locations, and are working on achieving that for City Hall. In October, we opened our Elder Justice Resource Center to provide legal assistance to citizens and assist them with services, court information, and education. Our Orphans Court has developed a guardian investigator to review and monitor guardian reports and filings. Our Family Court continues to house a juvenile probation evening reporting center, which is a community-based alternative to juvenile confinement, which allows youth to remain in their home and continue to attend their neighborhood schools. Our Municipal Court continues to provide a court-based landlord-tenant health program to improve access to justice for low-income and unrepresented tenants, and is hopeful that we'll be able to expand that. Our Traffic Division is a proponent of electronic citations, which will yield more efficient, expedient, and safer car stops. As you probably know, that in April of this year in the Stout Center, we instituted a cellphone restriction, and with using the Yonder pouch, which is a green pouch. I'll have Mr. Evers hold that up for you, which individuals place their phones into the pouch, they're turned off, but they don't have access to answering, texting, taking photographs. This was all done to deter witness intimidation and to make sure that there are less courtroom distractions. We also will be placing in our new civil jury room on the first floor here a mural arts inspirational program where it will emphasize the importance of jury duty and participation. We've installed 168 cameras in the Stout Center hallways and common areas to promote the cause of justice, deter intimidation, and foster a safe and secure environment for our victims of crime, witnesses, litigants, and employees. We also have equipped each of the courtrooms there with electronic evidence presentment, and again, this is in an effort to make our cases run more efficiently. I'm sure you've heard quite a bit about the MacArthur Grant and our participation in that, but this is an unparalleled collaboration fueled by CJAB between the city's justice partners and council, resulting in this $3.5 million award to address prison population, create alternatives to cash bail, and enhance diversion and early intervention programs, and also address racial and ethnic disparities throughout our system. There are more details about the search initial program, the early bail review program, which has been very successful in allowing individuals who are on low amounts of bail and no other matters holding them that can't make the bail, and they go through this process early on in the system and they are released. I'll also note that under the MacArthur Initiative, we will be attaining 700 new electronic monitoring systems, which will replace and enhance the current system by allowing cellular technology that will eliminate the need for the individual to have that old-fashioned landline. Additionally, the mortgage foreclosure program acknowledged the 10,000 homes being saved under the program. We've also developed a civil tax rule-returnable program to help residential homeowners to alleviate any property tax delinquency and the possible loss of homes through a share of sale. They come together with counselors and the Law Department and come up with agreement to make their taxes current. Additionally, we also have the civil tax dequestration program, which handles petitions to appoint sequesters for commercial properties where tax liens have been filed. In the three and a half years of this Commerce Court's program, the city has obtained over $54 million in back taxes, including more than $17 million in 2016. As indicated, this is just a brief, brief summary and highlight of some of the things that the court system is undertaking. Again, I ask that you read the detailed written testimony, and I'll also note that once our annual report is completed, as we did last year, you will be provided with that as well, which will give you additional information. But in addition to providing the delivery of fair, timely, and accessible justice to Philadelphians, the FJD should be recognized for its contribution to offsetting its costs and generating revenue for other city agencies. As outlined in my testimony, an investment in our courts, judiciary, and staff creates returns that positively impact our justice partners, other city agencies, and our citizens. Thank you for this opportunity to present this brief testimony today on behalf of the judiciary, the Administrative Governing Board, and the employees of the FJD. We respectfully seek this council's consideration and approval of our FY '18 general fund and grants budget request. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Your Honor. Always makes me feel good when I see a person who grew up in the Fifth Councilmatic District, not too far from where I live. Makes me feel really good, and I want to thank you for your testimony. Had to get that one in, Curtis, you know how it is. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Actually, one. So recently attended a conference, and we actually had a lot of the meetings in the City Hall in New York, and this is about security of this building. And before you actually got to the building, you had these booths, and in the booth, you had to walk through a metal detector, and I don't know what else they were detecting. And it was serious stuff, police officers there, the whole nine yards, and then when you got to the building, you had to show the ID similar to what we do downstairs, but it was clear that they wanted to make sure that nobody got in that building with a weapon of any sort. And I know that you and I have had some conversations about the lack of security in this building. Actually, just talked to the sheriff on Monday. What's your perspective on that, about the lack of security in this building? A building where you not only have elected officials, and we do tend to attract some people who don't necessarily like what's going on, but more importantly, we have a lot of courtrooms in this building. Can you give me your perspective?
Certainly. So I start with this. This building is very unique in that it houses all three branches of government: legislative, executive, and the judiciary. And as an individual who arrives in this building very early in the morning and leaves late at night, it really is very daunting in terms of the lack of security. We know that this is the people's building, and people have the right to access, but I think in even accessing this building, we really need to take measures to ensure that people who are accessing this building are safe, and that be the residents of this building or even people entering the building. And I do feel very strongly that we need to develop appropriate measures to, while trying to maintain it as a welcoming people's building, that we address the issues of concern to at least all of the tenants here in the building, and I think the public at large, given, I think, the massive amount of incidences that have occurred across this country in terms of courtroom security, knowing that there's someone looking at this, determining that weapons aren't being borne in, or even any other illegal things, I think would go a long way to ensuring more confidence in people entering the building.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to get that on the record, because I think it's time for all of those three branches of government to sit down and just have a real serious conversation, and then take it beyond our conversation to actually implementing some security measures for this building. I think we're actually the second least-secure municipal building in the country, and that's not a notation that we'd like to have. I don't know, Councilman Jones, I see Councilman Jones' wheels ticking as the Chair of Public Safety will make sure that we get on point on that and follow through on that conversation. Just had a couple of quick ones for you. In your five-year plan on page 307, you stated in the five-year plan that pretrial and case management restructuring is reducing the percentage of incarcerated individuals awaiting trial to reflect national averages. What is the difference in waiting periods between Philadelphia and other municipalities? Are we closer, or better?
I think with all the new initiatives that Philadelphia is implementing, we are certainly getting much closer to the national. We have a huge volume of cases in Philadelphia, and what we're working towards is to making sure that we are adjudicating these cases efficiently, that we are looking at the individuals that are being housed in custody, and some of this is under MacArthur, some of these are just under general court practices, to make sure that we are following the mandates of the national state courts in terms of being in the ballpark for that. And I think we're doing a wonderful job and moving closer to being within national averages. As a matter of fact, I think all of our programs in terms of adjudication of cases, both in criminal and civil, are over the 100% mark in terms of meeting those national standards.
And also, again, in your five-year plan, you discuss reducing time that a citizen waits for trial. Research has shown that the inability to post bail and length of time awaiting trial pushes individuals towards plea bargains. Does your department believe that reducing pretrial times or reducing cash bail will reduce the prison population?
I think that we are finding that out more and more, particularly as we work through MacArthur, and one of the early initiatives that I mentioned is the early bail review process with Judge Nyfield and Municipal Court. We're bringing in individuals, looking at their case. If they don't have any other holes, the bails are being reduced to really reasonable amounts of no bail at all, and with restrictions, though. They have to make sure that they're reporting to pretrial for orientation, and for how that's going to proceed. I was looking to just read you the numbers in terms of that. The 83% of the individuals who came through on the early resolution program for bail were actually, 82.4%, did retain release. 92% of those individuals appeared for their next court date, which is what bail is designed to ensure court appearances. So that's a good sign that people are actually coming even once they're released. 88% of those who were ordered to pretrial services show up for that pretrial orientation. And over 43,000 inmate bed days have been saved since the inception of this early review in 2016. The prison population has also reduced tremendously since that. So we are certainly moving in a direction of making sure that bail is really only being used for instances not where people can afford to make bail, but for very serious crimes, where we are looking at the protection of the public.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Now, I want to thank you also for your support given to the Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform, chaired by our Councilman Jones, Gira Bradford, and former Deputy Police Commissioner Bethel. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
And thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Your Honor, I think a lot of us have heard from some of the individuals that are serving as court-appointed counsel.
Yes.
And basically, on two issues. One, the timeliness of them getting the money that they have earned, and second, as probably a whole lot of other people, they'd like to get paid more. But I know something you've been working on, so could you talk about that a little bit, please?
Yeah, so last year, I convened a committee of judges, members of the Administrative Governing Board, private counsel, defense counsel, the managing director's office in the city, to look at this issue, because these individuals really have not had a pay increase since, gosh, 90s, maybe even the 70s in some instance. And so we know that that is primarily the reason why our court appointment list is shrinking tremendously, and we don't have the ability to ensure that individuals get appropriate and proper legal representation. So since that group has been convened, we've come up with some proposals, and so they're in draft form at this point. They have been approved in draft form by the Administrative Government Board of the Court. There is a meeting next week of that big group where this will be presented. Any changes will be made to that, and we are hopeful that we will be able to issue an order raising and changing the guaranteed fee system effective July 1 of this year.
Okay. That's make a lot of people happy.
I think so.
And how about the timeliness? And I don't know if that comes under you.
So the timeliness really goes to the managing director's office.
Okay.
But we're hopeful, because we're having this collaborative discussion, that we can encourage and assist in any way to ensure that these payments are made timely, and hopefully within the 30-day mechanism that is prescribed.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for appointing me to the Justice Reform Committee and dealing with public safety. Short of hanging out with my colleagues and learning from them, I believe it's safe to say I've learned more from these professionals in my public service career than any other department, and I'm appreciative of you allowing us in, because what needs to be stated on the record is, you talked about your role as President-Judge, but I would like to lead off with your other role as Chair of CJAB, because a lot of the results, whether it's prison population declines, whether it's diversionary courts, whether it is, there is a system of departments that are working together in an unprecedented manner, and you're seeing the results even before the MacArthur findings implementation, Justice Reform Committee recommendations. And I'd like you to touch on that for my colleagues, and how that is being accomplished, through saving of dollars for taxpayers, and also a different type of justice that is being administered that is not necessarily our grandparents' justice. I want you to talk about that for a minute in my round of questions.
So with CJAB, which is the Criminal Justice Advisory Board, which is a collaboration really from all the major justice partners, that includes the DA, the PD, the city, probation, the prisons, and all of the administrative judges, and basically what it allows us to do is sit around and talk about the issues that impact the criminal justice center system, and how we can all work together to correct, change, modify things, and make them more efficient, and taking into account the impact any change has on any individual, agency, or a group that's in attendance. I think it's different because it allows that conversation to take place around the table or during the work of the subcommittee. I'm sure all of you know that most of the hard grinding work is done by the subcommittee, and the actual CJAB is reporting out where those decisions and recommendations are made. It allows us to create new programs with the assistance of the partners that will be directly impacted, and that's what has helped with the creation of all of our diversionary programs, all of our reentry programs, all which help, one, in preventing low offenders from being housed in prison, finding alternatives to incarceration, and then making sure we are looking at individuals who are reentering society, and helping and trying to provide the appropriate services and resources that they need to be beneficial members of society, and to prevent that revolving door of recidivism in and out of the prison.
So for those who are watching on television or my colleagues in chamber, the simple notion of all of those justice partners sitting in one room once a month makes all the difference in the world, because what we tend not to understand, the silo maybe of the police department that says, "We're going to crack down on public disorderly," impacts the prisons, impacts the courts, impacts probation, and it's a secular effect. And so without warning, if you're not in that room when that public policy decision is made, then you're wondering, "Why are prison populations going up?" Because we made a public policy and another, a change in another department that affects that. And the beauty of it is that when they make those policies, the other partner hears it and can adjust accordingly. And that has resulted in reduction in prison population, reduction in costs, duplications and inefficiencies are cut down. And I just want to say that, to watch that, it is almost a government model that we need to do in department clusters. Tell us, give us a sneak preview of what the MacArthur Foundation is going to lead us towards.
I think MacArthur is going to lead us to greater efficiencies in the court, lower prison population, better services for special populations of individuals, particularly mental health, earlier resolution of cases, quicker and more efficient navigating of the justice system, and just a even greater collaboration between the parties involved. So again, as part of CJAB, it made it easier for these parties to come together, and I think the intenseness of the MacArthur process and grant has made this group even closer in terms of how they develop the program.
Mr. President, so Judge Lerner and Julie, whenever we ask them specific questions like that, now I know where the messaging comes from. They don't give up anything on the tape. So specifically, will we be looking at day reporting centers, which the president has been looking into? Tell me how GPS technology is going to impact that process. And as important, how are we going to retrain staff in the various departments to adjust to these changes? And I'll let that go in those generality.
So in terms of the...
Day reporting.
Day reporting. That's really an initiative that's coming out of CJAB, not specifically under MacArthur, and we have convened a subcommittee of CJAB to look at that, to determine what the best processing. I know there's a feasibility study that has been approved to determine what the best way to approach that is. I think everybody's on board with that. I think it's something that's been a long time coming. I know there've been discussions over that over the years, and, but I think we're in a place now with all the collaboration that we will probably be able to get that done. In terms of the monitors, so now we're trying to move up to the twenty-first century, so we know most people now no longer have landlines. So, with the electronic monitors, you need to have a landline. With the new technology, you can use it through a cellphone, so that will enable more individuals to be placed on electronic monitoring because they don't have to worry about the landline, which sometimes is an impediment for individuals to do that. And what was your third point? I'm sorry.
I'm going to hold a third point until my next round so that my colleagues
Very good.
can ask their questions and...
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Judge Wissinger. Couple of things. One, I want to commend First Judicial District on a number of their initiatives over the years. Of course, the mortgage foreclosure diversionary program, as well as initiative that I know Judge Lord Doom has been very strongly promoting regarding human trafficking.
Yes.
As well as the Elder Resource Center as the vice chair, the council committee on aging. I know I brought that issue up in the last year's budget testimony, and I was glad to be there when you did the ribbon cutting in the fall. Like Councilman Greenlee, I'm also concerned about the court-appointed counsel and the delay, the number of attorneys that provide that vital service, the delay in their payment. And I believe it was in 2012 when the court-appointed counsel payment process was moved from First Judicial District to the managing director's office. Do you have any perspective? I know you say you're working on some initiatives. Do you believe, should we move back to the First Judicial District?
I do not.
Okay.
I think that should remain a function of the city and the managing director's office. I think we should work collaboratively to ensure that the processing is done efficiently and timely, and we're also working together on developing the new fee schedule. And like I've indicated, I'm hopeful that there's going to be an order on that as of July 1.
Also, I've been working with a number of different agencies regarding expungement work, and there's been an increase in number of expungements. And I know there's, I believe, a product of about 200 expungements that are being processed per week. Has there been any discussion in reference to increase in number of employees in the motion unit? I believe it's about six employees now. With the increased number of expungements, has there been any conversation in that regard?
Well, we're always evaluating the need for additional employees or for redirecting employees, depending on what the needs are. And I can tell you that each time there's one of these very impressive and well-attended expungement clinics, we do work with the parties who are involved in that to ensure that the processing of those petitions can run as smoothly as possible, given the numbers of people involved in the process that has to be done from a legal standpoint. So, we do try to keep tabs on that, and we'll work certainly in a diligent effort to make sure that they are done in an efficient manner.
One of the things I've been having a semi-regular conference call with Mike Lee's group, as well as Philadelphia Bar, with Chancellor Gross, as well as, we just recently learned, the Public Defender's Office do daily expungements, and some of the other organizations, like The Bachelors as well, in trying to pull the information together in a better resourced use. The Philadelphia Bar, they come up with a Get Expunged website, and so we're trying to have all expungement information on that one website so you don't have this situation where people hear about an expungement clinic and they run thinking that's the only one available, when there's multiple expungement activities available. Hopefully, there was someone from First Judicial District that we can reach out to, to get involved in that process, to kind of streamline information and make it easier for people to access. I had a question in reference to bail. There's been a lot of conversations, especially during this current election season, with the various candidates for district attorney, and I wanted to get some better perspective on the bail process. It's been some time since I was in the DA's office, and some of that information's starting to escape my mental capacity. But when a person, when they provide the resources for bail and the actual appear, what happens to the money that's put up for bail?
Once the case is resolved and they can petition to have that bail returned.
Okay.
So, there's a process for doing it.
Right. And so then, how is the information provided to individuals regarding the ability to have the bail money returned through the petitioning process?
I think that once, when the bail is posted, they're given the information there then about when and how the bail can or will be returned. In certain instances, it may require, there are sometimes issues involving whether the bail is to be turned over to counsel for some reason, and that may require a court order.
Right.
So, it depends on the circumstance, but the general practice is told to them at the time of the bail is posted.
And do you have any information regarding how many people are successful in receiving bail funds returned back to them?
I don't have that information with me today, but we can certainly gather that and make sure we get it to you.
Okay. Another question has come up that's been an issue both of national and also local regarding sanctuary cities. My understanding, I know Councilwoman Sanchez and Councilwoman Ginn were recently in a meeting with ICE officials a little while ago, and so there's been some recent information that I learned that through the probation officers in the First Judicial District, that there's been some, I don't want to use the word coordination, but I want to get a better perspective on what's been the interaction through probation officers and ICE.
So, over the years, there's always been some relationship between probation and ICE, particularly on certain charges. Remember, probation is for individuals who've been convicted. So, on individuals who've been convicted of certain charges that come under the ICE regulations and statute, there may be coordination about those individuals. Probation Department does not actively seek out ICE, but if there is an official warrant from ICE, just like any other official warrant or legal authority, they are required to follow the rules and regulations regarding that.
I thank Council President. I have some additional questions. I'll come back in a minute.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
I have a couple. I just wanted to make sure, this is a nice presentation, by the way, you gave us.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand, is your request this year from the general funds, 111 million?
That is correct.
Okay. And what was the request? Was this for fiscal year seventeen, not eighteen?
This is for fiscal year eighteen.
Right. State your name for the record. The chart you handed out was for seventeen?
Sir, just state your name for the record.
Kevin Cross, Deputy Court Administrator.
Is the chart for seventeen?
No, it's for fiscal year eighteen.
Okay. Well, in the chart, it says the general fund's 110 million, and it's, your testimony's 111 million. I'm just wondering, it's a million dollars, but I'm just wondering which one's right.
Our request is for 111 million dollars.
Okay. And then, let me just go down the numbers for a minute. You're filing fees, fines, and costs at 31 million? Is that what you collected?
Yes, that's correct.
And if I recall, last year, we had a conversation about some of the, some of the fees haven't been changed for 30 years.
Yes, we have had some discussion about that, yes.
And so, when we figured out the rate of inflation from those fees was 144 percent, if I recall, from last year. And so, any idea of what, if we were to change those fees, what the impact might be on this budget?
We are in the process of implementing a new fee bill, and I've been working with the legislature to impose a new fee bill, and that is hopefully going to be introduced soon. We do not know what the new fees are going to be, and so we don't, at this time, know what the impact is going to be on the city's general fund, but we expect that there could be an increase in the civil and criminal fees.
Any idea of the 31 million, how much that represents?
It could represent 10 to 15 percent.
Total?
Yes.
And the other fees have all been up to date in the last two, three years?
And then, we'll be able to look at some of our programmatic fees and make adjustments there also.
Would you say most of these fees haven't been changed in the last three years?
The last civil increase we had was in 2006.
2006?
2006 for our civil fees, yes. So, the fees have not been increased for a while.
So, can I ask you for a recommendation to look at all of the fees and make a recommendation of where you can increase them so we can decrease our contribution? Because according to the state of Pennsylvania, the courts are supposed to be funded by the state, aren't they?
That's correct.
And they're not doing their job. That's costing us 55 million dollars. We should sue them for that, by the way, I'm sure. It's ridiculous that we're paying for their costs. So, my goal is to see that this gets to zero, and we don't have to fund the courts. But if we have fees that we've been not changing for 30 years, that's our problem. We need to fix that.
And we're working to achieve that.
So, can you give us a schedule of what we can anticipate in the increase of fees of everything from 1980s to 2006, and bring us up to 2017, and see what kind of money we're talking about?
Yes, we can provide that. We'll work on that.
If this 31 million, if it's just even half of that, which is 15 or 16, at 144 percent rate of inflation, that's another 20, 22 million dollars.
We can't guarantee that we can raise our fees that much, but we can look at them individually and see what's the best.
But I will say this, I know for a fact, I don't think there's any housing that's still sold at 1980s rates. So, I don't know why we're delivering services at those rates. It just doesn't make sense. All right, I'll come back to you on the second round. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President, and welcome, Madam President.
Thank you.
Great job with your testimony, and, you know, people fail to realize, you know, that, you know, when you talk about being on the front lines every single day, you know, our First Judicial District is the front lines, you know, especially for those who need proper justice and fairness in our city. And I don't mean to say that to be, you know, just as a standard, you know, compliment. I mean, you really do, there's a lot that goes into it. I'm always amazed of the technical data, all right, that you and the administration puts out. I think it's fascinating, and I think we can learn something from the courts on how you use your data and use it in your program-based budgeting and your systems as a whole. It's funny, I have to, I have to giggle a little bit, Councilman Dom's reference to, you know, we should sue. All right, I think, I think we've already done that, and here we are, nobody wants to touch it.
Right.
And everything seems to be like, okay, just, you know, let's just keep operating as we are and refine everything. I got a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
You know, we talk about, and, you know, my hat goes off to my colleague, Councilman Jones, in his passion and commitment to criminal justice reform and helping it, and you see some of the results in your testimony, you know, new initiatives, day reporting, CJAB questions. You know, we have heard over the past several years over the MacArthur Grant. All right, so my few questions on regards to that is, when is that, when's that going to expire? Like, when are we going to, we received just a few million dollars for some initiatives and review of the criminal justice system and processes. When is that, when do you anticipate that to expire?
So, it's a three-year grant, and we just are completing year one, so we have two additional years.
Okay, well, that's wonderful. All right, so three. And CJAB, I mean, you're, you're basically in collaboration anyway in implementing a lot of these suggestions, I think, that have been best practices across the country. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm also happy to hear that court-appointed attorney fees are, and which I am aware of, have been reviewed and recommendations coming forward, you know, for the new fiscal year. Same thing with conflict counsel. I mean, I think it's all, it's all one and the same when you're dealing with the fees. So, I think that, that's great for the citizens in the city of Philadelphia.
I certainly agree. It's one of those initiatives that we know is long overdue, and hopefully, it will have great impact on the representation for our indigent individuals.
That's awesome. And, you know, I'm sure that's a part of the bigger picture of the evaluation and review that you've been taking place over the last several years, especially since you have been in charge as President Judge.
Thank you.
How is, how do we evaluate whether a hearing would allow for remote video conferencing?
So, video conferencing can be used in several different ways. We, if an individual is at the prisons on state road, there are video, what we call crash court hearings, where that's all done by video, and that's usually to determine bail or next steps. We can do video hearing for violation hearings for defendants who may be in state custody in another state facility, and so we ask them for their consent to do that, and pull them out, and that saves the cost of the sheriff going to the state facility and bringing them in. It's more efficient, it saves time in court. The lawyers are able to use video conferencing to interview. We have set up stations in the Stout Center for them to bring up their clients, and particularly if there's a plea offer that perhaps will get the individual out of custody or move his case forward in another way, they can have that discussion as opposed to waiting weeks and weeks or months to either send a letter or get up to a facility that could be hours and hours away. So, it allows the system to work much more efficiently. There have been even times and occasions where video conferencing has been used during the course of a trial, where a witness may be in custody, they can't get that person down in a timely fashion, and that witness can be connected to the video, that testimony taken even in front of a jury.
I think, one, it's probably safer, all right, to some extent, in certain situations as you see fit, but you really can't cost the save on transportation
Correct.
over time. Is there other areas that the courts may be thinking about utilizing video conferencing? And I know this is probably a little too early for it, but, I mean, would, would the courts consider, or the justice system at large, consider some of the, I guess, the police officers using video conferencing instead of logging up, you know, we're blogging up the CJC?
So, that's probably a bigger discussion because, you know, there's always the right to confrontation, and I think the good thing about all the collaboration, that as we come up with new ideas about how to use video conferencing, we have all the parties around the table to discuss pros and cons, or how we can make that work. So, we're always open to new uses for video conferencing, but we have to get the agreement of the justice partners as well. And so, that's always a work in progress.
That is a tremendous amount of, large, I mean, there'd be, you'd need every partner involved in the criminal justice system to even have a conversation about that.
Correct.
You know, through our Comcast franchise agreement, the, they are in the process of building an INET system, that's Enterprise Network for Government Agencies. I mean, you can have enterprise speed, high fiber, you know, high-speed fiber cable going out to all our municipal buildings, police districts, you know, throughout the city of Philadelphia. So, one line next year, we will have that kind of instant speed and predictable and, you know, reliable type of technology at every municipal building in our city. Just, you know, when we're planning ahead, I know my time is up, but I'm going to leave the President Judge with a question on the GPS monitoring systems.
Yes.
One, I know we increased it last year, just, you know, generally, how's it going? How's, is, you know, how much, you know, can we quantify the savings in that when it comes to our, not just our court costs, but our, you know, our time that we have in our system, you know, some of these, you know, some of our population or correctional system?
So, any improvement in increasing our numbers with the electronic monitors and the GPS in particular, it's always going to improve our system, our ability to stay connected with the individuals that we are sort of watching and want to make sure that they're in appropriate places at appropriate times. So, certainly, that has been a plus, and with the addition of the 700 that we will be doing under MacArthur, that's only going to improve that system. I'm trying to see, so, for instance, with the electronic monitoring, the savings is 3,005, 3.5 million dollars for the juvenile delinquent GPS monitoring, the savings has been 6.6 million. So, it certainly saves money, time, is efficient, and it allows individuals to do things that they may not ordinarily be able to do.
So, there's almost an immediate term of investment. While, while monitoring and, you know, ensuring that the transition of somebody who was either incarcerated for a temporary timeframe into our society.
Correct.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Your Honor, can we touch on briefly a couple of things that you mentioned
Certainly.
in your testimony? The Juvenile Evening Center, I believe it was, is one. And then, I have a question. Some years back, we dissolved the clerk or quarter sessions and kind of merged it into court operations. Can you give us a update on how that has resulted by way of efficiencies?
Very well. So, starting with the Juvenile Evening Reporting Center, what that allows, it furthers admission of the juvenile, of the family court by looking at what's in the best interest of the child and being able to engage that child and move it forward. By having the Juvenile Reporting, Evening Reporting Center, it allows that individual not to be held center, it allows that individual not to be held in placement or in custody, but to get back into the community to be able to be there with family or with other supports are available, but also to be able to get to school, to be, to stay in the school in their neighborhood, hopefully to move forward and for that to have a positive impact while their case is being adjudicated through the system. So, they're not being held, but they're being able to be, be out in the community doing positive things.
How many young people have gone through that process?
So, that, there have been 84 gone, who have gone through the process and in 2016 reported a 91% overall success rate, meaning they're not getting back in trouble.
So, these, all of these initiatives are designed for two impacts. One, to increase efficiencies and reduce costs, but also for the benefit of taxpayer and all, so the accused. And so, as we measure these things, how do you, as an administrator, determine when we want to increase this program because it meets those goals or whether we are going to, you know, maybe not do that so much because the, we, as, as Councilman Dom talks about, how much does good actually cost? So, how do you, what's your matrix of evaluation?
So, I just wanted to add one point, don't lose track that the other purpose of that is to ensure appearance in court. And so, if you're using, utilizing these monitors or GPSs or a day reporting, a evening reporting center to see that if by providing these other opportunities, the individual will appear in court, but, and does appear in court, which is what this 91% success rate is telling us, that tells us this is a beneficial program because now we're saving the cost of incarceration or housing an individual. We're also giving them the opportunity to take advantage of supportive services that may be available on the outside and we're moving this individual forward. You know, I mean, people who could caught up in the criminal justice system doesn't have to mean that their life has ended. But we also want to provide them with opportunities to be successful as they, as they move out of this arena and back into society. And that's how we measure success.
So, if 90, if 80-plus young people went through it, how many went through the system in general? And how'd you get to that 80? And then, how do you know how many others should go through it versus shouldn't?
Okay. So, I'll probably have that number and I'll probably have to flip through to find it. But generally, you look at certain factors to determine who is appropriate for this type of placement. That may be the nature of the charges, like whether they had charges in the past, whether they appeared for court in the past. So, you look at family factors. So, there are a number of factors that you use to determine whether or not this individual is appropriate for this type of supervision. Because we know that everyone can do this, whether or not there's a home where this can be done, where they have a place to live. And a lot of us take that for granted, but there are so many children and adults who are homeless and don't have a place to live, and that would create more of a difficulty for getting them on this type of monitoring, which is why having additional resources in terms of housing and placement always helps with this. I'll continue to look for that if I don't have that number.
So, in our next round, and I'm going to pass the mic, in my next round, can we talk about the clerk or quarter sessions and that evolution of administration? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. This is Philly Tech Week, by the way, we're in it right now. And I noticed in your testimony that you roughly have many creating efficiencies within the criminal justice system, and the total of these efficiencies is roughly $14 million. And a lot of it was accomplished through technology. And a lot of it was passed on to other departments. But what I've been seeing going through these budget hearings is that, you know, technology's tremendous and we use technology, we're supposed to save money by using technology. And here I'm seeing 14 million, and I realize not all of that is your department, it's other departments. But how much of this 14 million is attributed to your
We can't attribute any of that savings to our department. We have efficiencies that we've created in our department through electronic monitoring, I mean, through electronic filings where we've been able to reduce staff over time and through attritions and where we've had departments that had 70 employees and may now have 30 or 40 employees because we don't have the walk-up traffic and we don't have the filings at the counter where all of our filings are done electronically. So, we've, we've been able to save through efficiencies within our court system that way.
So, I'm looking at, you know, most, most of the time you'd say, there's $14 million savings here. Well, show us the money. Where, like, where is that? And what departments are we seeing those savings? I've yet to hear anyone come in and say, we're saving X amount of dollars because we use technology, we don't need as much as we needed last year because of technology. Everyone comes in here, including the prison department, that's having a reduction of, Councilman Jones, what? 34%? And is asking for more money. And I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why are we not going in the other direction when we're using technology? And so, my question to you is, can you identify for us what departments in the city are actually receiving these savings and how much they're getting? Because I want to check on their, on their budgets to see if that savings has been put into the budget.
Okay.
Will you be able to submit that to the Council President?
Yes.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for testimony. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
It's a good thing when there are not that many members. It's a bad thing when there are not that many questions. You can't take the break. Can we talk about, in context of bail reform and early bail review, how the clerk or quarter sessions in collecting some of that internal process? How, is it more efficient, less efficient? How are we doing?
Well, we like to think that we're always getting more efficient in whatever we do. So, the process is one that's determined as, as we change how we're looking at bail, then processes are put in place to make sure that we accommodate the ability to deal with that. And we rely heavily on our court administrators and our Office of Judicial Records to ensure that, one, that the information is timely and accurately reflected and that the individuals who are working to ensure that the bail is being collected is done appropriately and properly.
So, how much bail went through our system last year? What were those actual dollars? And then, how many esconded and bail was violated? And, and so, how does it, so, let's dig down and see how, I remember in the hearings about the clerk or quarter sessions that there was some figure at the tune of 500, I think it was million? Was it million? That we were exposed? And now, how, how, today, how is it?
So, according to the information we have from 2016, there was 33.1 million dollars collected for bail. The number of esconders, I don't think I, I don't have that, but I can give that to you. But that was the amount of money that was collected.
And we get a, what percentage is administrative fee associated with bail? Is it about, if I recall, it's about 27%? Is that?
I don't want to quote you a wrong number, so let me make sure of that so that we get that right.
Because there is processing fees.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I get that.
Absolutely.
But I, I think we, as we start to look at bail reform, those numbers become important. Those statistics of people who esconced become significant in our reevaluation of how bail impacts people showing up and if it does. So, so, early heads up, and I'm sure to MacArthur people already know that it's a secret society of folk who know. But, but at some point, as the discussion becomes more public, we, we, those questions will be asked. And so, the numbers matter in the sense when we're talking about $31 million, when we're talking about some percentage of that being held by the city. So, so if we can, we can dig down and get that. So, by way of ankle monitors, it's my understanding that in the budget, we're looking at an additional 700?
Correct.
What is your guesstimate based on the average day of people on State Road, how it's going to further reduce the census population up there? What's a guesstimate?
Well, we certainly, that will certainly allow more individuals to be released on the GPS monitoring. And so, that will certainly decrease the prison population in terms of numbers.
It's a guesstimate, I would imagine. And I, those are, those are things as we, and I'm sure you have that, but I can only think that if some percentage, and we go back and forth on percentages, we stay away from that now. But let's say, pre-trial folk represent about 30% of the population, I think it's closer. And if 30% of that population is eligible, and I know there are a number of factors involved in that, public safety and others, but if we can do that, I, I predict that the needle will move further down. 700 monitors with an average day of six months or so has to put a dent in that, in that 6,500 that are currently on state.
Absolutely. And we will make sure we get those numbers to you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. One last question I wanted to ask. In your testimony, you budgeted for 2258 employees in fiscal year 17, page five of the budget. Yet, your increment run as of 1214 was 2333. So, I'm just wondering why we had to hire 75 more employees?
Two areas. One area is we have a full complement of judicial staff in our, in our current budget. We had judicial vacancies in the prior year and when we have, when we have a full complement of judicial staff, we have additional staff that are supporting those judges. And we've also hired additional probation officers in the Court of Common Police Trial Division.
Roughly, what are the average salaries of those people?
The judicial staff are probably around 38,000 to 40,000, and the probation officers are about 37,000 to 43,000, somewhere in that range.
And you're familiar with the fringe benefit cost of the employees?
Roughly, yes.
What do you think the fringe benefit cost is?
37 to 40%, 37 to 42% for new hires.
I think when you add in all the fringe benefit, including the pensions, they're part of the city's program, it's 87.7 right now, going to 92 in the five-year plan. So, I just wanted to put that in your mind because when you hire somebody for 40,000, it's really not 40. And you add in the 87, and it, that's not even adding in the city's overhead estimate of 37%. That 40 becomes 100,000 real quick. So, I just want you to be aware of, it's not 40 grand we're hiring, it's 100,000 we're hiring. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. You want to go? Well, okay, because he, he came back. He's been here.
I've been here.
That's fine. I'll make it easy for me. Makes it easy for me. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President.
I have just a question, Judge Woodskipper, in reference to, what is the process of placements and reassignments for judges within the FJD? How does that process?
So, that process is determined by coordination between all of the administrative judges on the court and what the needs of that particular division is at the time. And so, then judges are allocated based on need and coordination between those bodies of individuals.
Is there any consideration in reference to seniority, prior legal experience?
Not necessarily. I think it's, the greater emphasis is what the need of the court is. There may be some thought given to, has this person had certain experience in a certain area where there is a need and that might equate to a person being transferred to another division because there's a greater need there. But it really is dependent upon what the need of, of that particular division.
And when you say need, what goes into that assessment of need?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What goes into the assessment of need?
The thought process of the administrative judge and the ability to coordinate and get buy-in and, I guess, agreement from the other administrative judges. Because all of the divisions have to be staffed with an adequate number of judges. So, if one division needs an additional two and another one needs an additional one, and it goes back and forth as to who's getting what particular judge. And they're considering all the factors in terms of what the needs of that particular division is and how a particular judge may best fit into that program.
And if, and if certain divisions are having uptick in certain type of cases or caseload or slowdown, that goes into the analysis as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
How are you, Judge?
I'm fine, yourself.
Always good to see you.
I agree.
And before I start, just always want to commend you for your service to the city of Philadelphia.
And thank you, and thank you as well for your service.
Thank you very much. I've had a couple of questions regarding, under Family Court, specifically dealing with the issue of juveniles and restitution fines and fees. And just want to, for you to briefly give me an idea of the process in which the court administers fines and fees and restitutions for juveniles, how it's paid back, and also, if we could talk dollar amount overall, the amount that juveniles are charged on fines, through fines, fees and restitutions. Obviously, most recently, we struck an agreement with Department of Human Services and the state to abolish charging parents' child support for their children being in the juvenile judicial system. And I was always under the impression that this was really administered under the judges that come from Family Court. And so, can you just clarify that process for me and then just give me an overview of how that system works under fine, fees and restitutions?
Okay. So, that does come under the jurisdiction of the Family Court, Family Court Division, and each judge imposes individually the fees upon a particular case. As I'm, the information I have is that for 2016, the total collections for restitution for juvenile victims in court fees totaled $287,000. How much of that has been collected? I don't have that information. Or if you want a more specific breakdown, I'd have to get that for you as well.
Please.
And so, I can get that information back from you from the administrative judge.
Okay. And also, can you also find out for me, in the event that the family or the juvenile isn't able to pay the fine, fees and restitutions, then what's the recourse from the First Judicial District standpoint? Like, does a person stay on probation? Does it go into the credit union and impact their credit score? Because what we want to do is, one, first and foremost, make sure that Philadelphia never turned into a Ferguson where we're bouncing the backs of our budget on the backs of those who are poor that can't pay fines, fees and restitution. And I'll be finding alternative ways to rehabilitate our young people as opposed to bargaining their families down in fines, fees and restitutions.[1705.54]
Yeah, I can find out more details about that, but I can tell you generally, each case is probably looked at separately, and probably the major thing is the ability to pay, and so.
And one last question. So did the head of the juvenile court system, did they hear it today?
No.
No, okay. So using the tradition, Kevin Docker used to come and give us an overview, and so I guess I'll do a follow-up while I have my own separate hearing to delve into the issue, because I thought today we'll have a chance to at least ask some of those questions. But I'll do a follow-up in a separate hearing to just specifically focus on that issue. Thank you very much, President Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Oh, thank you very much, Council President.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Judge. I just had a question, and I don't know the answer to this, but I understand that in New York, if you get a traffic violation or parking ticket, that you could request to dispute that with an online hearing, and that you don't have to go to court. And I wonder if that is something that we could do here in Philadelphia? Are we looking at something like that?
I think we're always looking at new technology and how to resolve those kinds of issues. We have moved towards being able to look at what your traffic citations are and get a lot of different information on an online system. I don't think we've yet moved to that, but I certainly will have that discussion with the trial division administrative judge.
Thank you. I could only speak on my own behalf, but I would fully support funding something like that. Just people get these tickets all the time, and it costs so much money just to go to court. Take an entire day, if they got four kids like my wife, they're not going, they're just paying the seventy-nine dollars. And I just think if people could do it online, and there may be some fee involved in that, I just think that would be such a welcome thing for our city.
Very well. I'll take that back as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green. No? Okay, no problem. All right, I got to take advantage of a clear board. I want to thank you very much for your testimony today, and thank you again for your service.
Very well. Thank you for your time, it's been a pleasure as usual. Thank you to everyone.
Next up, we will have the Office of District Attorney. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
How you doing?
Fine, thank you. Are we ready to proceed?
Good, you can please, please proceed. You have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, just about ready.
And you may want to pull the mic a little closer to you.
I think we're looking for the.
Whenever you're ready.
We're looking for the clicker.
That's okay.
Thank you. I think we're.
You ready?
We have a changing of the guard and ready to proceed.
No problem.
Thank you, President.
You're welcome.
President Clark, good morning. Good morning. My name's Kathleen Martin, and I'm First Assistant District Attorney and Chief of Staff at the District Attorney's Office. Sitting next to me is Deputy District Attorney Jody Lobel, and behind us in attendance today are many members of the District Attorney's Office, including the deputies of various divisions within the office, all of whom are available to help us in answering any questions you may have following the testimony. We appreciate the dedication to working collaboratively with all the criminal justice stakeholders as we try to make Philadelphia safer, provide a voice to victims of crime, and improve our criminal justice system. Despite the unwanted attention to our office that we have received as of late, and the associated challenges that follow, we wanted you to know that the day-to-day work of the office continues unabated. We have not slowed down. Our job continues to be to seek justice, to do the right thing for the right reasons, to go voice to the voiceless, to stand up for victims, and to work with our partners to help advise on and implement best practices. With each new initiative or continued reform, we try to improve efficiency and provide services to all the citizens of our communities in ways that are smart, proactive, and results-oriented. Our work continues with the same passion, commitment and dedication to justice, just as it always has. You have our collective assurances that the exemplary work of the devoted staff of the District Attorney's Office continues. We have terrific employees in the office. They are overworked and underpaid, but they love what they do. And we love working with them, supervising them, and teaching them and watching their personal and professional growth. We all gain great satisfaction working to achieve justice and keep Philadelphia safer.
Good morning, Jody Lobel, Deputy District Attorney. As a result of the great work of the men and women of our office, we have a lot to be proud of. Simply supplying a list of the programs that we have implemented would not tell the story of the great results we have achieved, but we would like to highlight a few. Operationally, we have become better and more efficient in what we do. We divert more than thirty-four percent, in fact, close to forty percent of our misdemeanor cases, which is twice what we diverted in two thousand and ten. These programs work. The recidivism rate for misdemeanor diversionary programs was just sixteen percent after the first year of completion and twenty-seven percent after three years. We charge fewer cases than we did years ago, approximately one-quarter fewer cases in two thousand and sixteen than in two thousand and ten. Misdemeanors are resolved quickly. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, the time for disposition decreased from seven months to less than four and a half months, and we continue to withdraw approximately fourteen percent fewer cases during the same time period. Nearly seventy percent of felonies are held for court, which represents a nearly ten percent increase since two thousand and ten. And through our Smart Room program, over twenty percent of our felony cases are disposed well before trial, representing a three percent increase since two thousand and twelve. This program has allowed us to reduce continuances and avoid multiple listings in court appearances for defendants, victims, witnesses, and police. We are also proud that we have continued our role as a leading agency partner in the city's MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge Grant effort. Indeed, over the past year, our office has participated in every aspect of the grant's strategic undertakings and has taken the lead on implementing several of the important programs and lending to their successes at all phases of the criminal justice process. I'd like to explain some innovative aspects of the noteworthy programs supported by the MacArthur Grant. We helped to create the Early Resolution Program, which sought to resolve certain less violent cases quickly. Starting as early as preliminary arraignment, an assistant district attorney reviews cases for possible inclusion in the expanded Early Resolution Program. As part of MacArthur, our office agreed to expand the number and types of cases, including felonies, where a defendant receives an offer to resolve his or her case to a lower-graded charge. This is significant for many reasons, including the fact that the collateral consequences of a felony conviction are far greater than those of a misdemeanor conviction. The theme of expansion continued into our diversion programming as well. Our office worked with the courts and the defense bar to increase eligibility for DUI offenders facing mandatory sentences. Most notably, the new plan recommends that one-year mandatory DUI sentences be completed by serving only three months in prison. Previously, the agreed-to plan provided for six months incarceration. The remainder of the sentence is served on house arrest. Another diversion program benefiting from MacArthur is the successful The Choice Is Yours, or TCY, program. As a result of funds received from this grant, we were able to expand the types of cases eligible for TCY. We already have exceeded our target number of referrals into this felony diversion program for young adult offenders who sell drugs. You will recall us talking about this innovative program that provides pre-entry services, such as life skills training, to those who could be convicted of selling lower amounts of illegal drugs. It is truly innovative and is focused on reducing the likelihood of the individual's potential recidivism by addressing his or her criminogenic needs. It is intensive and has yielded excellent results. One hundred fifty-four graduates, fifty-six of whom were in two thousand and sixteen, eighty-eight percent successful graduation rate, recidivism rate of less than seventeen percent, which is an impressive percentage considering that the recidivism rate for this population not enrolled in the program is at least thirty percent. We have enrolled fifty-four new participants in two thousand and sixteen. Additionally, the office has worked collaboratively with, among others, the probation department and the Defenders Association throughout the year to reduce the size of our county prison population by focusing on offenders who are detained because of probation violations. By creating the Detainer Alternative Program, or DAP, we have taken an important first step by identifying substance abusers who continue to test positive for drugs while on probation. Instead of merely taking them into custody, usually for technical violations like positive drug tests, we are giving them the tools and resources to address their addiction from outside the prison walls. More generally, for those individuals who reoffend while on probation, we have worked closely with the Defenders Association to address these new cases in an expedited manner. Under the ARC program, defendants with open cases plead guilty in front of their probation judge or a judge who was the first to sentence them in the open case. This procedure creates greater efficiency, resulting in defendants resolving their cases more than twice as fast as before. Often, this means fewer prison beds being used to house individuals pending disposition of their cases. The grant is also permitting us to address issues regarding racial and socioeconomic inequities. Specifically through early bail review initiative, we have committed to reviewing bail cases in which a defendant has been unable to post fifty thousand dollars or less of bail. In short, the significant amount of collaborative work we have undertaken with the MacArthur Grant has been incredibly impactful, and we look forward to helping continue in its successes.
We also wanted to discuss the opioid and heroin crisis. As you know, the heroin and opioid crisis has taken great hold here in Philadelphia, as it has in many other communities across Pennsylvania and nationally. There were approximately nine hundred drug overdoses last year. Opioids being involved in approximately eighty percent of those deaths. In two thousand and thirteen, the number of drug overdoses in Philadelphia was far less, approximately four hundred and sixty. The District Attorney's Office is doing our part. We have collected nearly one ton of prescription drugs through our medical drop boxes, which are stationed in each police district. We helped secure funding of one hundred thousand dollars with the Pennsylvania District Attorneys Association for Narcan, the life-saving anecdote for those overdosing from heroin. We are instrumental in the enactment of, a few years ago, of legislation creating Pennsylvania's Prescription Drug Database, which helped to reduce prescription drug abuse and the illegal diversion of these drugs, and in more recent legislation, requiring doctors to access the database whenever they prescribe an opioid. It is clear that we cannot arrest our way out of the heroin crisis. Nonetheless, we in the District Attorney's Office have an important responsibility to hold major dealers accountable. Prison is meant for those who profit from the poison they sell on our streets and to our children. But addicts need treatment, and unfortunately, treatment is not always available. We must redouble our efforts to ensure that sufficient treatment beds are available. The mayor's proposal to provide significant funding for Narcan, to work with doctors to avoid the over-prescribing of drugs, and to track the openings of addiction treatment facilities, are inappropriate and, if implemented, should have a meaningful, positive impact. We also in the District Attorney's Office continue to work tirelessly to reduce gun violence. Our focused deterrence program, in which we work to overcome gun violence in South Philadelphia, continues to yield positive results. The message is widely disseminated in South Philadelphia through law enforcement and our community partners. Providing social services and engaging in community outreach is essential to the focused deterrence strategy. As of two thousand and sixteen, we've had six call-in meetings in which over two hundred gang members have heard the message to stop the violence, and we have offered social services to those members. We believe that the program can be expanded to other parts of Philadelphia. Such an expansion, however, must be done in cooperation with the police department and the other stakeholders, including social services. This would require funding, since focused deterrence requires staffing, intelligence gathering, and social services.
While focused deterrence is one of our most successful programs, it is not the solution to all of our serious crime concerns. We continue to experience unacceptable levels of gun violence. We cannot ignore the numbers. There are dangerous offenders committing horrific crimes with firearms, such as robbery, home invasion burglaries, drug trafficking, sexual assaults, and murder. The trends are ominous. As of the end of April, homicides are up by eighteen percent. As of this morning, we have one hundred and five homicide cases compared to eighty-nine at the same time last year, again, an increase of eighteen percent. In two thousand and seventeen through April thirtieth, we had three hundred sixty-five shootings and one hundred three homicides, compared to just two years before in two thousand and fifteen, when we had two hundred sixty-four shootings and sixty-eight homicides. That's an increase of one hundred and one shootings and thirty-five homicides in those two years' statistics. Each of these cases has victims, families torn apart, communities reeling, and Philadelphians fearful to leave their homes. The challenge of bringing these perpetrators to justice is exacerbated by witness intimidation and the unfortunate reluctance by some to cooperate with law enforcement. These are not excuses, but rather remain our challenges moving forward. Criminal justice reform is important and necessary, but reform is far-reaching and is meant to make things better at all levels of the system. Let's not forget that we live in a city where gun violence is at an intolerable level, and the trends should concern us. We must increase our funding and programming to decry violence on our streets, curtail witness intimidation, and enhance witness safety. Shootings at the end of two thousand and sixteen should not be at one of their highest points in the last five years. Our focus on community engagement has taken our staff to over one hundred and fifty community meetings and events in two thousand and sixteen. Whether assigned to geographic zones in our trial division or to other divisions in the office, our personnel is public service-oriented and takes its responsibilities seriously. We speak at public schools. We participate in days of service, cleanup days, tree planting days. We attend community meetings, PDAC and business associations. We present anti-bullying and safety messages across the city. We work with our seniors. We are invited to career days, fairs, victims' rights symposiums, and town hall meetings. Our consistent interactions with the citizens of our city help them to understand our role in the justice system and to do what we can to provide outreach, information, and a positive presence in our community. We also continue to make incredible strides to reduce juvenile adjudications. In the early two thousands, we filed nearly twelve thousand juvenile delinquency petitions, which is, strike that, sorry, I'm in court. Strike that. In two thousand and sixteen, that number has reduced drastically to twenty-one fifty-eight. That is a reduction of eighty-two percent. Further, this is a reduction of almost two hundred petitions from two thousand and fifteen. The number of instances in which we charge a juvenile as an adult has dramatically reduced as well, from approximately twelve hundred cases in the early two thousands to fewer than two hundred now. We had one hundred ninety-seven DFJs filed last year, which is an eighty-three percent reduction from the early two thousands.
Additionally, because our mission is to ensure that what we do is correct and just, our conviction review unit has expanded, a reboot, so to say. It now consists of a staff of three, including two attorneys, a paralegal, and the use of a. a detective. The unit was created and expanded without the benefit of additional fundings because our office is committed to doing the right thing at every stage of every proceeding. And using our own funds for that was important to do at that time. The unit remains independent within the office, but the office as a whole is committed to doing the review that is necessary to continue the mission of the office. And if you're going to ask what is the success or the metrics performance of the conviction review, just since January, we've had a hundred and fifty submissions from the individuals in custody or their attorneys and reviewing them at a rapid rate. We've opened fifty files for more extensive review. The success of this unit can be measured not only by exoneration but by the number of files reviewed.
The role of a prosecutor and a prosecutor's office is so much more than it was a decade ago, and we are proud of our reforms and our results. We charge fewer crimes than we did in the past, divert more nonviolent and less violent offenders, have been instrumental in helping to reduce the size of our prison population, continue to be innovative with regard to gun crimes, and encourage appropriate expungements. We have revised our charging practices to charge the right cases and have attained a higher conviction rate on these cases coupled with a shorter amount of time to resolve them. That is good for victims and witnesses and for the system as a whole. Diversion and more efficient disposition of cases yield significant cost savings to the city. Each program saves taxpayer dollars.
Excuse me. This is not testimony that was submitted? Is this testimony that your office had submitted to us earlier?
It's an expansion of what we submitted to give more detail to the council members' present.
Significant expansion. I'm just wondering, because we're looking for your testimony and it's not reflected based on what you're talking about. Okay. Can you make sure we get that?
Certainly. Will do.
By resolving cases faster in our smart rooms, the cost savings to the city are approximately one million dollars annually. Our extremely robust accelerated misdemeanor program is estimated to produce annual savings of more than three million dollars. The successes of the programs created under the MacArthur Grant will yield significant savings by reducing the size of the jail population. We emphatically believe that some form of justice reinvestment should be implemented so that the agencies and entities that become more efficient and ultimately use their resources to save the city significant amounts of money can, at a minimum, receive back a portion of their own costs in staffing the programs that led to the efficiencies. We are also doing more internally. We have recently expanded training for our entry-level prosecutors. Training involves a significant time commitment by members of our senior staff, but it is well worth it, helping to ensure courtroom lawyers who are prepared and professional and ultimately to retain them in the long run.
This year's budget proposal adequately funds our office. Specifically, it provides for thirty-seven million, eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is roughly ninety-two percent of this amount is attributable to salary costs. Of course, we could do much more with additional funding. We could upgrade our case management system. An enhanced system would allow us to effectively implement performance-measuring tools and move us towards being less dependent on paper files. Additionally, it would help us prepare for performance-based budgeting in the future. We could better afford to utilize technology in the courtroom. Likely next fiscal year, we will need additional funding related to body-worn cameras. We have already witnessed an increased volume of discovery, which affects our staffing requirements in terms of processing, transferring, retaining, and storing videos. As the city implements the use of body-worn cameras throughout all of the police department, our staffing levels need to be increased to meet the demand in terms of reviewing the videos and determining what can be given to the requestor, that which cannot, and that which must be redacted. These efforts will require a significant amount of time. But we are pleased to report that the mayor's office continues to work closely with us and, like you, is mindful of our budgetary needs. As an example, the mayor's office recently helped to facilitate implementation of a much-needed new phone system in the district attorney's office. Our most pressing budgetary need is to slow down our rate of attrition. In our trial division, more than fifty-three percent of our prosecutors have less than five years' experience. This means that the more experienced attorneys are leaving at a rapid rate. In fiscal year seventeen to date, sixty-two percent of our attorneys with more than eight years' experience have left the office. The more experienced attorneys who are better able to make decisionary, strategic decisions have left the office. The Defenders Association will likely make a similar point about their staff attrition, as may the city solicitor's office. With regard to the district attorney's office, the reason why someone leaves is sadly predictable. The person loves his or her job and wants to stay but simply cannot afford to do so. Absent meaningful and predictable salary increases, this problem will persist.
Lastly, we wanted to take a few minutes to discuss the issue of parity. We understand the request of the public defender's office to have parity with the district attorney's office. We do not oppose parity as a concept and believe it is entirely appropriate to ensure meaningful and accurate parity among criminal justice agencies. We believe there should be a rigorous parity analysis, and we will be happy to participate in such an analysis. While that is not a simple, easy, or quick task, a parity analysis will, we believe, provide appropriate detail to help you and the mayor's office make informed, data-driven, budgetary decisions in the years going forward. I'd like to introduce my colleague Greg Rowe, chief of the legislation unit, who would take the lead now in discussing an analytical framework for indigent defense parity.
So on the next slide, we only have a couple of slides on this, but the next slide indicates really what our framework that we believe would start with, which would be a rigorous caseload analysis. That's the bread and butter of what we do, of what the defenders do, is cases. So...
She didn't hear your name.
I'm sorry. Greg, G-R-E-G, Rowe, R-O-W-E. I'm chief of the legislation and policy unit.
Thank you.
I apologize for not saying that earlier. So what we would propose, as we all go through this analysis, is to identify the numbers of cases that each of our offices handles, the type of case, and to assign a value to the case. Homicides are complex, long, exhaustive cases. On the slide there, we assign ten points. That's an arbitrary number, but just to show that a homicide takes more than, say, a drug possession or a retail theft case. So we believe that's the first analytical point that should be examined. On the next slide, we would suggest that you look at what does each office handle in terms of how far does the representation go? If it's a jury trial, that takes longer, that takes more resources, that takes more time. If it's a guilty plea, that still takes time but not as much as a jury trial. But if you go just to a preliminary hearing or a preliminary arraignment, that's going to be somewhat less. So the analysis should take into account those factors as well. And then on the next slide, we would have to consider appeals, post-conviction petitions and responses also. Moving through the slides, the next one, and really the next two, are we got to account for the uniquenesses of each office. There are budgetary factors that we have to account for, and there are budgetary factors that the defender's office has to account for. These lists are by no means exhaustive. It's just a way to say that after we do caseload analysis, we then have to look. We have victim services that we do, we have to do discovery, the defender's office has to cover its lease, they have to cover personnel benefits. So there's a lot, but sort of going through in a rigorous, linear manner, we think would provide just a very accurate representation for ultimately getting to that parity question, which has been an issue over the last couple of years.
And that is by no means to say that we don't agree that all justice partners deserve parity. We're just presenting a formula that can start the process of the talks to engage, to make that happen. Finally, thank you, Council President Clark, Jones, Johnson, everyone here. On behalf of the almost six hundred employees of the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, we thank you for your consideration today and your ongoing commitment to make Philadelphia a safer and more productive place for its citizens.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Quick question. Closure rate on homicides. What's our closure rate on homicides? Because I've been hearing that term thrown out there lately. I guess we're in the political season, so people are talking about closure rate.
Closure rate for homicides currently is forty-five percent.
Forty-five percent?
Yes.
So how do you measure that? Because my assumption is that homicide, the case never closes, there's no statute of limitations. So how do we measure the rate if it's always an open-ended investigation? I mean, I understand what they call cold cases, you know, I watched that Law &amp; Order stuff. And they say, cold cases, not as many resources are devoted to a case as it gets older, but...
I agree. There's many victims out there who, if their case is not cleared or closed, would have the continuing pain. But I can call Deputy of our Trial Division, John Delaney, up for a more precise answer.
Morning, Mr. President.
Morning. Just to say your name for the record.
John Piersenpatrick Delaney, D-E-L-A-N-E-Y, Jr. I think you may be referring to the clearance rate.
Clearance rate, I'm sorry.
Not the closure rate.
I'm sorry.
And the clearance rate measures for each homicide, was there either an arrest or a decision made by our office that there will be no arrest? For example, if the suspected killer is himself killed, we will authorize the police department to exceptionally clear that case, so it doesn't count as open any longer.
Okay.
But the clearance rate currently is about forty-five percent, meaning of every one hundred homicides, forty-five of them result in arrest or some other definitive decision.
Okay. All right, that's what I meant, but I used the wrong term. So when you say clearance rate, it just references the status of the case, not necessarily the fact that this person will never, that case will never be resolved.
That's correct.
Because when you hear, as a layperson, somebody saying, you mean to tell me if more than fifty percent of these people that kill somebody are going to walk away scot-free? And that's real problematic to the average person when you hear that.
No, you're correct. It's a shorthand way of saying the investigation is open or closed. And for the investigations that remain open that are not cleared, they continue.
All right. So why do we use that term? Because this is a term that, and I'm trying to think, you know, I'm not a criminal, you know, thank God, I don't go around shooting people. But if you're like a person that reached a level of desperation, you say, you know what, I'll shoot somebody. I got a fifty percent chance that I may not get caught.
The conventional... I understand the concern. The conventional wisdom is the higher the clearance rate, the more efficient and the more productive the investigations into those crimes. And there are multiple reasons why the clearance rate waxes and wanes.
Well, that was my next question. Why, what would you say is, and I know there's a lot of people involved in investigation policing, what do you think the most significant issue is in terms of us not being able to get our read up significantly?
I would suggest to you that this is something that we prosecutors don't like to admit, but without people, we are powerless.
Meaning the public?
Without people, we are powerless.
The public.
Correct. So if people don't come forward and tell us what they saw, or what they heard, or even what they suspect, because oftentimes they can give us the one piece of information that will lead us to something that can result in closing a case by arrest, for example.
Right.
But it's people being intimidated or people being reluctant for other reasons to share their information with us in the first instance, and then if they do share their information, to participate in the investigation or the prosecution. Because it requires a significant amount of courage for someone to come forward and say, I know there's a bad guy in my neighborhood, he's so bad he killed somebody, yet I'm willing to stand up in a public place in front of him and his lawyer and say that he did it.
Right. How much latitude do you have in terms of charging an individual for witness intimidation? Because, I mean, it's, I, you know, I live in North Philly, so I understand some of the challenges and people's unwillingness to, you know, as they call it on the street, snitch, right? What's the, there has to be a deterrent, I guess, for individuals to intimidate a witness and also making a person feel comfortable that if, one, they do give information that can assist the case, and two, when they make the nine-one-one call, nobody's going to come knocking on the door and say, did you call? Because that's the belief of a lot of people. And then the district attorney's office interviewing the person and it gets out. I mean, what do we need to do to, what's your recommendation on how we need to?
Well, I think like most problems, it demands a multi-pronged approach. To answer your first question, our charging standard doesn't vary based on the crime. It's do we have sufficient evidence to prove somebody beyond a reasonable doubt committed a crime? That's true for witness intimidation, it's true for murder, it's true for retail theft. In terms of witness intimidation, there are a number of things that we can do and are doing. One is to assure people, despite the common wisdom, it happens rarely. It happens far too frequently than it should, but it's a relatively rare occurrence. That's number one. Number two, if somebody is willing to come forward, we have the resources, thanks to the city and the state budget, to relocate people. If somebody tells us today that they're a witness in a serious crime and they face a serious imminent threat, we can remove them from their house today, put them somewhere temporarily, and help them find a permanent place to relocate to.
All right, that's the key point, the permanent place, because the temporary nature of what the belief is, is problematic. So you're saying, is that depending on the type of case, the permanency of the relocation, or is it...
No. Once we decide that we're going to relocate somebody, we commit to temporarily relocating them for months.
Okay.
And in helping them relocate to a permanent place. The difficulty for the citizen who wants to do this is, they have to agree, never to go back to the neighborhood, that we, with their input, define as the danger zone.
Right.
And I was, to add to your original question about what are we doing about witness intimidation, there are a number of things that are going on. Part of it is our immersion in the community. Kathy and Jody talked about our community engagement. The more the people recognize that we're not foreigners, we're Philadelphians just like them, we live in their neighborhoods, we want them to be safe, and that the only time they see us shouldn't be when there's a crisis, when they have to come and testify about somebody getting shot. The other thing I would cite too is what President Judge Wood Skipper described in her testimony, and that is the suppression of the use of cell phones in the courthouse. Because if we can't protect people when they're testifying, there's no chance we're going to protect them when they're home.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. That's a problem. One other question. On your testimony on page four, according to, I guess, is a chart, your participation rate as it relates to contracts is zero percent, has been since FY12. Thank you, sir, for your response. Appreciate it. What is that all about? Is that a typographical area? I mean, you'd have to go out of your way to have zero contracts for participation.
If I may, our Chief Financial Officer, Dorian Rooney.
All right.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
One thing I do want to explain is, beginning in fiscal year seventeen, this current fiscal year, is when we began contracting through the city's contracting process. Prior to that, we were not involved in the city's ACIS contracting process and didn't have that, the recommendations for the participation rates. The majority of our contracts are also victim services contracts, where there's only one entity in the city that can provide the particular services needed. And with that being said, during this process this year, moving on to the city's contracting process, the city has recognized that and has made us exempt in those particular contracts, so there wouldn't even be an eligibility rate for those.
Give me an example.
So Concealed...
Where there's only one.
Or there's Victim Services of South Philadelphia. So that is the only agency in that particular area of the city that can fulfill the requirements of what we need for those services. So given that, that there is no competition, it would be impractical to say, well, you have to have a certain participation level if there's no other service provider that would be available to us.
So is that, give me some, just briefly, I'm just trying to understand how you have like zero percent.
So there, well, zero percent is because it can't be applicable if there is no, normally that's something there you want to achieve during a bidding... that's something there you want to achieve during a bidding process. But if there is no bidding process for certain unique contracts, that it isn't applicable.
So all your contracts are like that? There's like no, so like, we have contracts here, I mean, we're not in your type of business, but, you know, we purchase materials, we purchase things. You don't do that at the DA's office?
We generally do not. The majority of our contracts, as I said, are the victim services contracts. So this requirement would not be applicable there, because they're not going through that type of bidding process you would with services or products. Another one of our very large contracts is with a company called DrugScan that does expert testimony in court for us. The Police Department contracts with DrugScan to actually perform the analysis. So we basically have to contract with the same company, because they're providing testimony on the work that they've performed during the analysis. So the Police Department is going through the bidding process to identify and procure DrugScan. We are obligated to also use DrugScan, and therefore, again, it's not applicable in that instance for the participation rate. This fall, we are just beginning to do an RFP for some of our services that would apply, and we would require the participation level, and that's our computer systems, something that actually can be bid upon, that various entities would have the capability to provide services. So beginning in seventeen, we will have participation levels for those contracts.
Okay. All right. We, do we have access to all of the contracts that have been let directly from the DA's office over the prior years? In case I wanted to go back and check. Not that I don't believe you, but...
Prior to...
Zero!
Prior to this fiscal year, City Finance would still have it. It wouldn't have gone through the whole ACIS system, but we would have sent it through as encumbrance documents, and the contracts would be included with those.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you. Sure.
Just as clarity, on the contract services that you're talking about, I happen to be, for a short period of time, a member of Northeast Victim Services, so I understand a little bit of that. Can you explain victim services, and how many victim services do you have around the city of Philadelphia? Because they don't, I don't know much about that kind of contracting, as opposed to when we think of contract, at least the way I think of contracting here in the city of Philadelphia, we think of some sort of professional services and, you know, whether it's a law firm for conflict counsel, or whether it's a management firm for software, or some kind of purchasing, those kinds of contracts. I think victim services and those kinds of services are a little bit different. I really don't know, they're more community-based, collaborative with other, with some of our local law enforcements and members of the community. So just for clarity, could you explain what a victim services is to City Council? And how many do we have here in the city? Because I think that'll, at least in my mind, I mean, I just don't want things to get confused on how you go, how a victim services is created, because I actually don't know the answer to that either.
All right. But I thought you said it was only one.
I gave you an example of, say, the South Philly, I said, the majority of our contracts are victim services, and they are community-based.
So there's none in North Philly, and none in West Philly, and areas that...
There are, there are.
None of those entities are, have any minority participation?
All of this...
I was trying to let you, you know, I was trying to move on, but now the councilman is, so if you got them all over in different neighborhoods, I don't understand why there's no victim services in those areas where extremely predominant, predominantly minority.
It's that there wasn't a participation level assigned to it. I don't want to say that there are not, they are not represented by different minorities within each. In fact, previous testimony that we submitted in prior years would note whether the director, what ethnicity they were, we did include other information, but there wasn't the participation level that's mandated by the OEO for these particular...
Don't you know who they are? I mean, you don't need OEO to tell you what the, if you contract with that organization, you kind of have a sense of who that organization is. You don't need OEO to tell you.
The template, our understanding of the template was to put in the OEO participation rates that were assigned during the bidding process. It wasn't...
I mean, we don't, I don't, I don't think we use OEO, right? We just kind of know who we deal with as a separate department like you are. So I don't need OEO to tell me if the contracting opportunity...
So if our understanding was wrong, we can go back and put in the levels. I want to understand...
And you may want to revise this, because this is not a good look, in all honesty.
Okay. We can definitely do that.
Yeah, please.
I would want to understand, too, what the, what you're looking for for the level, if it's the Executive Director of the agency, or if it's the composition of the employees that are doing the services.
Well, I'm saying, if you have, you contract with a company, and participation in the people within that company, what the demographics...
Okay.
So that would, I mean, to come in here with a zero participation, is this not a good look for you?
We can make the revisions.
All right.
We'll definitely do that, Council President.
Thank you.
administrative type of information request that you might be able to gather and then report back to the, to the Council President? You know, I'm not sure, again, on victim services, specifically how they were contracted, and how competitive it is. I really don't understand that much. But I do know that there is diversity amongst them throughout the city of Philadelphia. So I think it's, I think it's being confused. But if you can, you could just make phone calls to Lawyer/Executive Director and say, "Hey, give me, give me a report of your employees and your participation on the board." That would be helpful, and would shed a little better light on some of the lines of questioning here.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Councilman, tee back up, because your name came off. When you got a point or order, your name came off the screen. So if you want to tee up for a later question. Chair Recognizer, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to ask a couple of questions regarding, obviously, the issue of youth gun violence. And I noticed part of the presentation talked about a significant focus on the opioid and heroin epidemic. But I'm one to believe that I've been doing this work for over twenty years, and we've been dealing with the epidemic, epidemic of youth gun violence since I've started back in nineteen ninety-eight. And so I want to go down the path of just getting a understanding. And I know you're going through a transition, and so I kind of feel like these questions I'm going to be asking, I'm going to be addressing with whoever's going to be the next District Attorney. But at the end of the day, it's the staff that keeps the engine moving forward. And so I respect all of you for the work that y'all are doing in moving on the institution forward. One focus deterrent, because obviously, it's primarily focused in the Second Councilmatic District as a pilot program. Can you, do you have any measurable goals from the social service impact? I know we've done the call-outs, I participated. Do we have the measurable goals in terms of the services provided to the young men who are participating in focus deterrents, who might have been diverted from engaging in a life of crime and violence? So that's GED, that's getting a job, that's one part. And also, I'm sure you're aware that, or if you weren't aware, that there is no increase, or there wasn't an increase submitted from the District Attorney's Office or the Mayor's Office for focus deterrents. And I talked to the administration about this, because it was expressed from the administration's side, that there was a commitment to address this issue. But for me, if we don't see the increase in the budget, then that's not reflective. And the response we got was, we were waiting for the next District Attorney. But however, I believe that the second floor sets the tone, because obviously, they're going to have to come here to get the budget anyway. But can you elaborate on why there wasn't a proposal for an increase?
The partners, the initial partners, had a conversation with Commissioner Ross about focus deterrents, and we all sat down and sort of decided that, yes, we're willing to participate, because the council has expressed a desire. You know, everyone wants it in their councilmatic district. So we're willing to move forward in the right area. One area of the city was identified, maybe make it a smaller area than all of South Philly that was identified previously. And we have identified, based on the rollout of when that would happen, we're not sure yet, how large it will be, and the timing of that, what we will need to move forward. So as I said in my testimony, there may be a need for one additional DA who can track and monitor the bail increases, to monitor the individuals who are the subjects of the focus deterrents. But we have not submitted anything, because we're unaware of at the present, when that will be, and what the, what it entails, how big it will be.
So you're just in a holding pattern in terms of the amount of money you think you would need to move forward?
We think we can begin to work it as we are right now.
Without, without an increase in funding?
Because we don't know how big it will be.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to get some clarity on that. And then, two, are we still engaging, recently did a press conference with State Senator Anthony Hardy-Williams, because we also had an Illegal Gun Task Force, worked in partnership with the former District Attorney, Lynn Abram, and also the former AG at that particular time. I think it might have been Corbett at that time. And we've received a significant amount of money to go after those individuals who fled the streets of Philadelphia with their illegal guns. And so we do have a budget request to Governor Wolf to restore it from three point eight to five million. Also been in contact with the current Attorney General, Josh Shapiro, about supporting this initiative. Can you give us an update on where the District Attorney's Office is in terms of the Illegal Gun Task Force? And how are we going after those who are selling the guns, carrying the guns? These guys sell heroin, they sell opioids, so you go after them. What are we doing to go after the people? Because I always like to say, there's no Uzis made in Point Breeze or Shore Bay Mansion. They're coming from somewhere. And Councilman Jones and I were talking about last week, how in Chester, it is in a press conference, caught this guy selling a trunk full of guns. Like, where's that enthusiasm to go after guys that terrorize our neighborhoods? And I don't even hear it in the current debate. I think everybody that's running wants to be a reformer, but they forget there's a victim out there. There's a mom who funeral I have to console, and I'm always going to her funeral every week. There's the other side of the conversation in a reform movement, when you talk about neighborhoods being terrorized. And so can you give us an overview on where we're at from that aspect? Because our city is being ravaged by people carrying guns and murdering people.
Thank you for acknowledging what's on everyone in the District Attorney's Office mind, that there are still victims for all these crimes, and that they need to be acknowledged, and their voice needs to get heard. Regarding gun violence, the Gun Violence Task Force, made in cooperation and run in cooperation with the Attorney General's Office in Philadelphia, is run out of the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office. We have a number of DAs who are dedicated to that. The Deputy of Gun Violence Task Force is here, Ann Pontario, and she can address some of the specifics of what they're going for regarding picks denials, the gun shows that they're going. The agents are fantastic and getting on them to try this.
Do I go to gun shows?
Yes, the gun shows.
Ann Pontario, that's A-N-N, Pontario, P as in Peter, O-N-T-E-R-I-O, Deputy District Attorney. Good afternoon, Councilman. With the gun violence task force, we currently have eighteen agents and three supervisors, and we have staffing of analysts, paralegals, and prosecutors. And we work together, so to not only do what you say, find the people who are selling the guns or giving illegal transfers to those in Philadelphia. So what we do is, we do a multiple, multiple things. We work with the ATF, okay? We work with state parole, and we work with the Pennsylvania State Police. And as our first assistant said to you, we work with gun shops and gun shows, gun shops in Philadelphia, outside of Philadelphia, and also gun shows. We have gun shows twice a year approximately in Philadelphia, and we have a number of them in Oaks, gun shows which are in Montgomery County. And what we do is, we, I don't want to tell you all the things that we're doing to do that, but we do go to those gun shows, we do have relationships with those gun shop owners, so that when they know something suspicious, they notify us. And then we take it from there, and we investigate. We also look at every single gun case in Philadelphia. The agents look at every single gun case and try to track where that gun came from. And we look at also all lost reports of guns, because we try to make a connection, too, with that. So those are some of the efforts that we're doing right now, so that we can figure out how these guns are getting to these individuals' hands in Philadelphia and do something about it.
Are we still utilizing gun stat?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair Recognizer, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a young person, I never, ever thought I would be saying this to the District Attorney's Office. It's just not justified.
Can't wait to hear this.
Well, no. The ultimate measure of a man or a woman is not where they stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy. And that's a quote from Martin Luther King. I never, ever, ever, ever thought I would say that to you, but it is truly appropriate for the professional men and women of the District Attorney's Office. And my point to you is, keep your head up. People know the difference between someone who may have had a bad day and a bad department. I want you to know that. I've worked with individuals on day reporting trips, I've worked with you on PCCD, I've worked with you in trying to figure out gun stat and data-driven processes to deploy limited resources. So we, I want you to know, we get it. And we value you as professionals, and want to work with you as such. You know, as a kid, I never wanted to see a DA, DAD, A, but as a grown man, that could, is more probable to be a victim, I'm glad you're there. I have to deal with not just the victims of crime, I mean, the perpetrators and safeguarding their rights, but some of the victims. I go to way too many Teddy Bear Memorial, where mothers, and sometimes fathers, are like throwing their hands up, like, how do we stop this? How do we prevent this? And often in that answer, the solution is you. So I want you to keep your heads up. The sun will come out tomorrow, all those kind of things. Yeah. And if it depends, it depends in part on you. So we want you to keep, keep working with us. I mentioned to the courts earlier that the C-JAB is an important part of some of the positive outcomes that we've seen as it relates to justice reform. I want you to also understand that you're an integral part of that C-JAB. So when something affects one end, it affects the other. And we appreciate that. On, so, without, with all the accolades, I don't say, I didn't give them to you, because you deserve them, some of the challenges that we see in the community, we have got to get better at some things. The President and I fought for more dollars for witness relocation. Tell me where that is. Without witnesses, there is no justice. So we got to figure out how we're doing with that. I'm concerned about the difference between closure, conviction. Once you get somebody to trial, what is your conviction rate? So I understand closure can mean both perpetrator and defendant have resolved things, or whatever. But once you get the bad person in the courtroom, what is your conviction rate?
Well, first of all, thank you very much. Everyone at the District Attorney's Office appreciates your acknowledgement of the distractions that are there for us, but we are here to tell you that nothing will distract us from doing our jobs and seeking justice. Every day, we go into those courtrooms in the CJC, and that's what we do, and we will continue to do so. Regarding C-JAB, we agree that getting out of our individual silos is so important, so that we can come together as a community for the betterment. And talking with each other and re-engaging and engaging in that conversation is ultimately necessary. Currently, our conviction rate is seventy percent. Regarding witness relocation and witness funds, we appreciate all that you did years ago to get us additional money. Currently, the Attorney General's Office also supplies money for witness relocation and witness fees. In fiscal year sixteen, from the Attorney General's Office, we spent a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Fiscal year seventeen to date, it's currently ninety-one thousand dollars. But from, the budget from the city in fiscal year seventeen, we've spent from the money that you were able to provide to us, a hundred and nine thousand dollars, and in sixteen, nine thousand dollars. And that's in relocation. As regarding witness fees, currently, to date, for the money from the city and with your help, eighty-seven thousand dollars, and in fiscal year sixteen, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So with the requirements for each, and when it can be used together, from the money from the state and from you, we are able to relocate and give safety and security to the number of witnesses who do come forward, and we appreciate it.
How many? Rough round figure?
We don't typically say the numbers. I can happily say it, you know.
But I don't want to know, no. I don't want to.
If I'm able to, I'll talk to you privately.
All right. So I would, I would, I would like to, I would like to, for us to kind of focus... So, I would, I would, I would like to, I would like to, for us to kind of focus on how you are helping us reduce, in this justice reform, some of the charges unnecessarily, and where are you on bail reform?
Well, I, I don't think the DA's office charges anything unnecessarily, but I can go to Ms. Lowell for the history of how charging used to be and what reforms we have done and continue to do, and we're always willing to look at everything again, and then answer your second question.
Well, with regard to bail reform, we're certainly always involved in initiatives, and as I stated in my testimony on behalf of the office, we are really joining MacArthur in trying to expand any initiatives that we currently have. Our early bail review has been really helpful among the other, the other programs that we've started. I'm sorry, I can't remember what your first question was.
Where are your bail?
Just bail reform, just continuing to bail reform. Okay, so, that is an issue close to my heart. I could sit here and talk about bail reform all day, and I'm very pleased that in the past five years, we finally got it on the map. It started with the charging initiatives years ago, where we took experienced people, as you know, we put them in the charging unit, and we tried to make sure that there was sufficient evidence to sustain the charges. We do have an initiative now that does look at early resolution of cases by reducing the charges, which encourages people to maybe have shorter incarceration periods, or shorter probationary periods, or divert them to services, especially in areas of, of drug cases. We're looking at addiction and drug usage more as a health problem or a social problem than necessarily treating somebody as a criminal. We're always looking for more beds, we're always looking for more ways to get people out of the traditional path of prosecution that leads to incarceration and giving them other services and other, and other, afford them other avenues. But to that end, we still are very far behind because our bail guidelines are somewhat antiquated, even though they've been updated in certain areas. We have a hard time with the fact that we have not a lot of alternatives. We have monetary bail, we have diversion, we have early bail review, we have the option to reduce charges and get people out, and of course now we're looking at day reporting. But without viable alternatives, it's, it's tough. So we leave a lot of the decisions open to the magistrates, and the only time that we really chime in is if there's a gun offense or extraordinary flight risk, where we'll ask for somebody's passport to be taken and maybe ask for an increase in bail, but those, that's where we are currently.
Mr. President, bail was started in feudal society over in some European country, mostly because they wanted to be able to assure people that were victimized would be compensated. It evolved to what we have now. And I just want to, I'll hold off my second round of questioning for you, but again, reiterate the fact that we see you, and we see you for the professionals that you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A couple of questions I wanted to just ask. Who manages the finances of the district attorney's office?
Well, you previously met Dorian Rooney, who's our chief financial officer, and with the, when I came on as chief of staff, I was on top of her in the chain of command just to monitor any fiscal responsibilities and administrative jobs that were needed and supervised.
Well, I don't say that in a negative way, because your finances, your request of this year versus last year are pretty conservative compared to other departments, which is good.
Yes, thank you.
Now, let me ask you a question. On page three of your testimony, you mentioned an increase in Class 100 of $813,504 to support mandated union increases and to maintain current staffing levels.
Yes.
As far as non-union increases are concerned, are these increases performance-based?
We asked for additional, that $800,000 approximately, to offset the provisions for the contributions for the mandate for the pension funds. Any increase we give to any attorney in the office is performance-based.
Okay.
It is merits raises only at this point.
What, what is the starting salary today of a district attorney? Hold it 52, just to wrap it up.
There you go.
And so in your budget, the big book, section 38, page 5, you have 598 full-time employees, and you have for fiscal 18, $47,518, an average of $80,000 per person. Does that sound right? How does that compare?
Yes, it's going to have a wide range within that.
Right. And so how does that compare, because you mentioned that we are having a tough time keeping people in the department? Have we looked at other cities similar to Philadelphia to see where we stack up in relationship to salaries?
Well, realizing that half, excuse, realizing that half of our staff are attorneys, so you also, you have a pocket that, you have a group of individuals who are DC 47, DC 33, FOP members, both detectives and, and higher, then you also have support staff and attorneys. So it's, it's kind of hard to do that average of saying 80,000, because you're looking at a very wide range of individuals.
But you're also paying the new lawyer, new DA's 56,000, did you say?
52, okay.
52, okay, and you said most people aren't staying more than five years, so I'm, I'm trying to understand, are we not paying enough? Are we paying too much? Or how do we compare, this is the question, how do we compare to other cities of our size on the salaries we pay? I'll give you an example, I'm looking at the budget on page seven, and I don't understand this, but I'm asking the question. We pay the current district attorney $177,868. We pay three deputy district attorneys $170,000 each. In my way of thinking, I would think there's a bigger gap between those two positions, but I'm wondering, is that normal, or is that what we should be, you know, looking at?
Well, the district attorney's salary is mandated by statute. He's $1,000 less than a CP judge. I'm sorry, so what is the?
So my question really is, when you're saying you're having trouble keeping people, how do our salaries stack up against other cities of our size? Have we looked at other cities to compare our salaries versus what other cities are paying?
You're asking about salaries, and we've done some work, I mean, York County, Pennsylvania has a salary for a starting DA that's significantly higher than ours. But then you compare it to Manhattan, and you have to do a lot of jig and jagging for cost of living and location. But if you look at the overall budget for, regarding, for violent crimes, so other similar cities with the crime, the size of ours, and the amount of ours, we are the low, we have the lowest budget in the district attorney's office for any city across the country.
Would you have that information of other cities?
Yes, we have it in a chart we can hand to you.
Can you share it with this?
We've used it in previous years.
This spotty, okay, thank you.
The one year we decided not to use that chart.
So here's my last question for this round. Have we had an external audit done, external audit done, that would help increase the effectiveness of the taxpayer dollars as it relates to programs, initiatives, procedure, and personnel costs? And do you agree that this would be a good idea? Especially at this time?
I understand your question. I think with MacArthur, there is going to be more external audits done within that program itself, which does take into account a lot of our diversion programs, to decide, are they working and are they worth the resources? An external audit, bring it on. We just need someone to pay for it.
Yeah, no, I mean, actually, though, it's, the investment of paying, of having the audit is well worth it because of the information, it's not in a critical way, it'll actually help, help you do your job better.
Agree 100%.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just quickly, first of all, I certainly concur with Councilman Jones, he said it much more eloquently than I would, but, that I could, but he was, you folks are, you're doing a great job over there.
Thank you, sir.
But I just have one question, and it revolves around what you have up there with the chart. I was trying to figure out what you're trying to say with that.
With the indigent defense parity chart?
Yeah, I mean, just.
Okay, we have talked a lot previous years, and we've gotten together with the Defenders' Association, with the Law Department, to sort of put it out there on the table. Everyone's always asking for parity, and in previous years and this year, we agree there should be parity. It's just a question of how we figure out what the appropriate parity is. Basically, all criminal cases, the district attorneys are involved in every criminal case in Philadelphia, but the Defenders' Association might not be involved in every single one. Maybe they're at about 60%, just throwing a number out there, because they also have, under the managing director's office, the private, or not the private, the court-appointed counsel. So we want to put them in the formula. So the slides you see are just the starting point for a discussion on how to get to a formula that would be fair to determine what parity is.
Okay, I, I guess the reason I bring that up, and you didn't exactly say this today, but I know other, other years a DA has sort of openly argued against parity. Now, you didn't say that, I understand that. So I just wanted to make clear where, why you say, because I never quite understood that argument. You know, I understand any department coming in here arguing for what they need, I guess I never understood arguing against somebody else getting something.
No, I'm not arguing against anyone not getting something. A good system, a good criminal justice system, appropriate dispositions in court requires good advocacy on both sides.
Okay, I think we all agree with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Yeah, I might have to echo the comments of my colleague and say, justice works best when scales are balanced. Up at PCCD, this is not just a phenomenon here in Philadelphia, but all over the state, all of the defender associations make considerably less than, not, I mean, have smaller budgets than the district attorneys, and that doesn't seem quite fair. The second piece I would say is I would have to differ with my good friend and numbers guru, Councilman Dom, that the reason, like, by way of paying you too much, I have my legislative assistant, I mean director, here because of that disparity in part, other than that it's a great job over here.
You stole away from us.
Yes, we sure did. And, and if you want to avoid other people from stealing, you, you have to, you have to compensate people. You guys come into this thing usually with $100,000 worth of debt based on your education loans and things like that, and to have to work that off, and to keep competent professionals. From the guys in the barber shop, they know the guns over there, meaning folk that when you walk in the courtroom, when you walk in a courtroom, you go, oh, let me take this deal now, because there's going to be a problem, versus some of the newer ones, that they say, no, we got, we're going to take advantage of this one, and that longevity, that experience comes with being there. When I, when I caught Sam at a weak moment, she had two file in, in, in boxes, carrying them behind her, and Sam, as you know her, is a happy-go-lucky kind of person, at least until she transforms into the prosecutor that roofs people. But you could see the stress of the number of cases on her face. So if we're going to have justice at its balance, I believe in both, that the Defenders' Association, in order to keep good competent personnel, should be compensated. The district attorneys, who are the other side of that balance, should get so compensated as well. And I'm not pandering, as I, you know, but I do, I do sincerely believe that.
Point of information, Councilman.
Take that, hold my clock.
Yes.
Just real, a real quick point of information.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. One thing I do recognize, I did recognize since I've been in council, and I remember Seth during his presentation last year, clearly, there hasn't been a significant increase across the board for the district attorney's office, I think maybe the last two, two administrations. It's just been, I never understood it, even in private conversations, like dude, what's going on? And actually he had a public feud with the outgoing last mayor around, how come he can't receive funds to expand his operation due to the work that we're doing? So we talk about compensation for high-quality prosecutors to come and do their job, I mean, let's be real, part of that conversation needs to be, when they put forth, when y'all put forth a budget request, whatever administration it is, responds to that request, because even when you look at this year, no increases, pretty much significant, I mean, pretty non-significant moving forward. And so I think that's like the 800-pound gorilla in the room that needs to be addressed. If y'all want to be effective with reforms, that's going to be coming down the pipeline, but also still effectively doing your good job, because I still, one of you guys, Joe Shute, Harris, who is one of my policy guys.
So we still?
He's doing an excellent job, but nevertheless, though, we're going to have a real conversation about it. Hopefully the next person isn't shy about, even if they aren't shy about advocating for additional funding, you have to have administration that says, you know what? And a council that's supportive of that increase. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Dom, were you trying to do a point of information? All right, see you guys.
So, so, he's starting to know the moves.
How to jump, jump the line, you know? It's all good, you've been here for more than a year, you know?
Councilman Jones.
Let's say it, this sort of record, so I can say point of information.
Point of information.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to clarify that my point isn't whether we're paying too little or too much, my point is that we don't know, and we need to look at other cities to see how they're operating, to see how we can retain our people, and, and maybe pay them more, or determine what we're doing. That was my only point. Thank you.
Councilman Jones, we will resume your, your clock, sir.
Thank you. Real quick, back to bail. How are the amounts of cash bail requested in the preliminary arraignments determined? How do you, that value of safety on bail? And then, how often are those determinations appealed by, to the masters about being too much? And last year, how many bail motions did your office file in the Court of Common Pleas? And for the record, Samantha did all these questions.
Before we get to the details, Councilman Jones and Johnson, I appreciate it, and on behalf of the 264 attorneys currently in the office, they'll be willing to take a million dollars at any point in time to raise those hours.
No problem.
Send it on over. But as to the bail guidelines, I think Ms. Lowell has some information.
So, we have a matrix, what, after someone's arrested, they go through pre-trial services, they're assessed in many different ways. We look at their history, we look at their current crime, we look at the risk of flight, we look at where their living situation, if they need a monitor, if they have a home phone line, et cetera. And then we set, assign numbers to these factors, and we come up with a guideline, matrix, on our antiquated guidelines. And then we take that to the bail magistrate. And since, of course, we arraign so many people and we go through so many cases, the bail magistrate has a pretty good idea of what, how they're going to set bail. We recommend ROR on any case, release on their own recognizance, on any case in which we're going to divert. Other than that, as I said before, unless it's a very serious case, a gun case, a focus deterrence defendant, we usually let the bail magistrates make that determination.
In your opinion, do they vary in, you know, apples-to-apples comparisons? Does it vary? Is there a fluctuation?
I think.
I see, I see the body language there.
I think that they are, we have the same magistrates for years, I think that they're pretty consistent. Almost all the cases in arraignment court are represented by the public defender's office, who do an excellent job of advocating for their clients. Every once in a while, you get a private counsel come in and make an argument. We do have the remedy of an appeal, which I believe we use pretty infrequently.
Right, so, 2016, a total of 33,000 cases were charged. We appealed at that level only 180 of them.
Okay. I'm going to pass the mic, Mr. Chair, and I'll come back around, just a few other questions.
Okay, Councilman, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I'm going to be quick, so we can wrap this up. This is along the lines of juvenile lifers and, and the resentencing process that's going on right now. And I know it was not too long ago, one of the newspapers talked about the district attorney's stance on the resentencing, the resentencing process, and, and so I want you to clarify what your position is. From my understanding, 75 of the, 75 uncontested resentencing hearings have taken place in juvenile lifers' cases without parole, and also there are 200 and 500. have taken place in juvenile lifers' cases without parole, and also, there are 250 which are contested, which will require a significant amount of resources. And so, I want to know how much, what's the timeline for holding the hearings for the 250 that are contested, and how much resource has been allocated for FY18 to address these particular resentencing cases?
The allocation of resources was done by the city before we had a certain number for each year. It's approximately 250,000 for FY18. Just as background, Philadelphia has about 300 of the juvenile lifers without parole that needs to be resentencing. Some of your numbers, I believe I have the most recent numbers, total, let me just back up. Every single case of those 300 is looked at individually. We've assigned approximately five attorneys and detectives and victim witness people to go through the protocol that was established by Deputy District Attorney Delaney. It's culling the file, finding it, locating it, then doing extensive work to locate the family of the victim, who, you know, we're talking years and years, decades, could be lost. Advocating with them, with the help of victim witness coordinators, to reignite a horrible trauma that they had to go through, working through that process, and then ordering the adjustments from the DOC, the Department of Corrections, how they've been doing in jail for the last 20, 40, 50 years. Culling through these boxes and boxes of evidence and information, looking through the facts of each case individually. Only after looking at all those facts is a determination made individually on what is the appropriate sentence for that individual. We are using the current statute as a guideline, and a guideline only. To date, we have given 115 offers. Of those 115 offers, 81 are immediately eligible for parole. Only 34 are not immediately eligible for parole. We have, so far, 65 have been resentenced by agreement, three are pending resentencing by agreement. Only 15 of those offers have been rejected, only 15. And we're waiting for, you know, acknowledgement on 27 others, whether they accept it or reject it, and the next contested hearing is, you know, May 17th. So we're continuing to work on what will be a long process, but we're doing it diligently, efficaciously, and individually.
And as I wrap up, I just want to give a thank you for highlighting the part that the victim's family plays in this whole process. And I go up the greater floor, do a lot of work with the lifers, but I also explain that on the opposite side, right, I understand people deserve a second chance, I believe in that, but also taking consideration, there is another family who has been impacted by violence that has to be a part of this conversation, and that's that balance. Because, again, I spend a significant amount of my time, this Saturday, I go to church on Saturday, but the first thing I had to do, nine o'clock in the morning, speak at a funeral, a young man that was murdered in South Philadelphia, console the family as a result of some senseless gun violence. And the reality is, you got two families warring over a murder that took place 20 years ago. And so, as time goes along, with family that's a hill, you're bringing up, you know, a tragedy in a situation. So that's the other part about, this is a law enforcement position, and I just want to acknowledge you for your hard work, and tell y'all, keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for wrap-up.
For wrap-up. Got it. Got it, Mr. Chairman, understood. Can, I would just quickly echo a couple of things that you can be mindful of. When people want to come forth and be witnesses, we can't come to their house in the neighborhood and show up at their door in the big police van or city car. People know those things amply. We have to be a little more strategic in where we meet people, how we contact them, because it puts them at risk. In some of these impacted neighborhoods, you know, it's two streets over, and you both share the convenience store. So we have to really be mindful of that. My question, my final question, Mr. Chairman, is, since in 2014, we passed the legislation to decriminalize possession of small amounts of marijuana, how has that impacted your world?
Well, I have some statistics on our small amount marijuana program, which is still in place. In 2016, we sent 865 people to the SAM program, as compared to in 2013, where we sent 3,190. The reason that we still send people to the SAM program is that we tend to distinguish between, as I said before, treating possession or use of marijuana as a social problem or an addiction, if you want to call it that, compared to people who buy marijuana when sellers have set up open-air street sales, or used cars or buildings to sell marijuana. So when people are arrested as a buyer, we tend to send them to the program. We have found an excellent success rate, better success rate, following an arrest and completing the SAM program, and they're still eligible for expungement, than when we were diverting them directly to SAM without an arrest. So if somebody's creating a disturbance in the neighborhood, if there are street sales in the neighborhood and that person's arrested, we send them to the program. It's been quite successful, and otherwise, we'll divert them and give them treatment as we would any addict or anybody who has a social concern. So we found that it's been very helpful to us and to the community to make that distinction.
Okay, so our prosecutions are down. That gives way to move other people into a more expedited trial and prosecution scenario. So we're moving people and paperwork out of the way, and then making room for people who actually deserve it. So with that, I'm going to end with what I started with. We see, and you're a part of our partnership, and valued members of it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
I don't see any further questions from council. I want to thank you all for your testimony, and, you know, to end with, you know, the district attorney really does a tremendous amount of good for our city of Philadelphia, and, you know, we thank you for all your service, especially under, you know, the caseloads that you have and circumstances that we, that you, you know, were presented on a daily basis. So thank you for coming in, and thank you for your time. And we will, this will conclude our district attorney's testimony and hearing for today. We will report back at two o'clock for Law Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a village approach.
Thank you. Next up is the Law Department. My lawyer.
My name is Sosey Pedro Chalante. I'm the city solicitor and head of the Law Department. And it appears I'm joined by almost all my staff, but it's not all of them. I am joined by Craig Straw, he's my first deputy, and he's to my left, and Donna Mosaic, who's our deputy administrative solicitor, as well as other members of the Law Department who are here. Thank you for having me here, Council President Clark, and members of the committee of the whole. I obviously am aware that you have my written testimony, so unless you object, I am going to provide merely a digest, a summary of my written remarks.
Thanks, sir.
Some of the highlights there, as council is aware, for the fiscal year, this past fiscal year, we've expended tremendous effort defending the Philadelphia beverage tax. We spearheaded a team to defend the tax, and as you're aware, in December, the Court of Common Pleas dismissed the lawsuit. That was filed by the American Beverage Association. Since then, that lawsuit was appealed to the Commonwealth Court, and the court on bank heard oral argument last month, and we don't know when the decision will be issued by the Commonwealth Court, but I can tell this body that the court recognized that both party want expedited resolution of that matter. I've been spending a substantial amount of my time dealing with the issue of sanctuary cities, along with a couple members of my staff. We've also worked with, we retained two law firms, Deckert, as well as Hogan Levels, to look at the, both federal and state challenges to cities' finances. And they're fairly complicated, but we think that the city is in pretty solid legal grounds to proceed, and we're obviously working with the administration and briefing council on a regular basis to ensure that you know where the city is on that issue. One of the things that, when I came in as solicitor, I wanted to focus on was on affirmative and general litigation. And as a result, we've actually been able to beef up our efforts to try to collect on liens and judgments, and as I believe, as of now, we're up to about 600, short, $650,000 in collections as a result of these efforts. We've also put a focus on diversity and inclusion. So I meet with Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer Nolan Atkinson quarterly, and the results are clear from where I stand in terms of the success of our efforts. We've hired a total of 50 new employees since, from January 1st, 2016, through December 31st. Fifty-six percent of 28 individuals were diverse. We've also focused on attorney hires. Of the 30 attorneys that we've hired during that period of time, 57% or 17% were diverse. We've created a diversity committee, which is led by Michelle Flamer, to focus on implementing strategies to not only recruit attorneys, and part of our challenge is actually retaining attorneys into the Law Department, educate employees on current and relevant diversity issues, create marketing and networking activities and opportunities. We had our first Black History Month program this, in February. We had a Hispanic Heritage Month program, and we're going to have a Women's Month program as well. So that is a summary of my testimony. I know there are a lot of issues potentially discussed, but I wanted to just give a digest on some of the highlights.
Thank you very much, as a solicitor. I had a couple of questions. Your budget detail on Section 29, Page 4, the general fund has 1.2 million reduction in Class 200 associated with a non-reoccurring FY17 increase. Can you please detail the purpose of the reduction?
Yeah, the reduction is actually a result of good news. As council is aware, this year, we have negotiations with District Council 47, with fire and police. Historically, we've relied substantially on outside counsel to do most of that work. And so in anticipation of that, we had transferred some funds last year for that outside counsel work. What has happened now with Deputy Mayor Rich Laser and Office of Labor Relations taking the lead in that, it's actually led to a reduction of outside counsel fees. And so as we were able to extrapolate out, it was clear to us that we didn't need those monies, because we used DC 33 negotiations as a template, and we realized that we're actually seeing substantial savings in outside counsel fees. And so we work with budget, and we determine that we can actually safely and responsibly reduce those costs. That's a direct result of that.
Helps to have a person in the government that can actually talk to both sides.
Yes.
Particularly talk to the workforce in a reasonable way. All right, that's a good thing. I guess that's a template for future mayors, always have somebody that's close to you and talk to the workforce, and as it relates to negotiating a contract. Let me see. You talked about, in your testimony, you highlighted the effectiveness of the Law Department in defending the city from a $20 million lawsuit related to an airport expansion. How do you get to a point where you make a decision on settling on a case? And I know, this came up in the last administration, because the indemnities fund was going relatively high, and we were concerned about that. Also, I believe during the ABI, well, actually, post ABI, there were issues with respects to some of the tax filings and appeals, and the Law Department was involved in some of those aspects, some aspects of those negotiations. When do you all make decisions on whether to cut bait fish, or whatever that term is? I can't remember what it is, fish or cut bait or something. But at some point, when you're getting to a point, you say, well, we may lose this case, and it's better to settle versus an award that may be through the roof. Is there, or is it a case-by-case basis?
It's on a case-by-case basis, but we're actually, we have some general principles. Clearly, if we are presented with a demand, often that's how our cases began prior to a lawsuit, and we evaluate it, and it's clear that, you know, there is an opportunity, that on the merits, we do some investigation, that the city will have some liability. We want to be upfront and try to resolve the case, because on the federal level, when we have civil rights cases, for instance, we, even if we, there's attorney's fees involved, so, you know, if you're able to resolve a case pretty early, then you can remove that. Within the Law Department, we have authority depending on rank, so I get involved in cases where the authority is a million dollars or more. But if it's a case of significant precedent or public importance, I get involved at a pretty early stage. For instance, on some of the big police cases, I personally get involved, because I want to make sure we're being fiscally responsible. But I can't talk about what was done in the past, but the way we want, also, we want to be in a position as a department that if we think that a case is resolvable, that parties don't want to resolve at a reasonable settlement amount, it's important sometimes for us to go to trial, because it allows us to value our cases, and it sets a message.
Right.
Because if folks know that city's easy pickings, they're just going to keep suing you and expect settlements. I have folks here who can talk about, you know, sort of, specifically on tax cases, you know, they're below me, there's Valerie Robinson, the corporate chair, who has authority, and below that, there's Chief Revenue Counsel Francis Beckley, who also has authority, but, you know, we can give you more details on.
This is a general question. One last, city, county, we're both, and I think this probably contributes to our quote-unquote structural deficit, our requirement to fund certain county functions, such as the courts. That's clearly a county function, but yet, we have to cough up the money. And I think we went to court, we sued years ago. Have you got any veterans that were around at that time? It's my understanding that we actually challenged the unwillingness of the state to fund our court system, and I believe we actually won, but the General Assembly basically said, eh, whatever, and didn't appropriate money for that. Am I right? Eh. And one, would we ever revisit that, or is that essentially based on the way, I guess, the Constitution is written, that the General Assembly can essentially ignore the court ruling? And two, are there any other county function mandates, unfunded mandates, because, as a result of us being a county?
Well, I don't know if we have any veterans here, I know Richie Fader.
Richie's always.
Who runs our legislation.
Anytime we do the archives thing, Richie always steps in the play.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the committee. Richie Fader, Chief Deputy City Solicitor for Legislation. The story is not quite, is actually worse than the way you presented it. I don't believe the city has ever brought such a lawsuit, but the county of Allegheny brought several lawsuits challenging the state's failure to fund the local courts, on the theory that it's really a state constitutional responsibility. And the Supreme Court did twice say, yes, that's correct, it is a state responsibility. The General Assembly made several small moves in the direction of funding the courts. I believe they now pay for the judges themselves, and maybe the judge's top staff, but not the rank, not the vast majority of court employees. And several years ago, the County Commissioners Association brought another enforcement action with the Supreme Court, saying, could we please get the General Assembly to do something? And the Supreme Court held that the General Assembly has done enough, and we're closing shop, and they're now in compliance with the Constitution. So although you look puzzled, and I was puzzled also when I read that decision, the Supreme Court made it very clear that, in their view, the General Assembly has now, is now in compliance with the constitutional responsibility to fund the courts, even though.
Because of those.
Because of those small steps that they have taken, and additional steps that they are contemplating. I haven't read the decision in a few years, but that was clearly what the Supreme Court said. said, which was, don't bother us anymore. We can't get the General Assembly to do any more than...
Yeah, it's more that.
We can't, well, between the lines, we can't get the General Assembly to do any more than that, and that's as much as you're going to get.
And that ruling stands. So that was their ruling then, so it's no need even in attempt to revisit that.
It's always worth looking at things again, but the Supreme Court did not appear to leave us very much of an opening.
Yeah, okay. Any other particular functions that we have a quote-unquote unfunded mandate as a result of being a county? And I'll understand if you can answer that, kind of, through this one from left field.
Well, we'll think about it more. I mean, there's sort of other county functions, but the question is, when it are funded.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, you know, we, I don't mind us getting in line to wait for the state to give us money. We right behind the school district.
The school district, that's a good unfunded one.
Yeah. Yeah, tell me about it, all right? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fader.
Counselman Green.
Counselman Green.
I actually want to...
Who was at the point of, which one?
I wanted to follow up with Richie on that point.
Counselman Green, you had a point of information?
Yeah, point of information.
You were actually next.
What?
You were actually next.
Okay.
No, I'm saying, your time is up. You're teed up.
Well, I wanted to check if you were finished, or you're...
No, I'm good. That's what I'm saying, you're...
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that litigation issue. Was there any, I guess, mandamus perspective from the court to direct the General Assembly to fund the county? Because I vaguely, it's been some years since I read that opinion too. But I don't, I got the perspective that Supreme Court, and that court had a different composition than the current court, from a perspective and reference to the city of Philadelphia. They basically said, you've done enough. But I don't remember anything that was actually in the case that was brought, actually directing the General Assembly to fund County Philadelphia or Allegheny County, because I think Governor Rendell, at one point, also sued when he was mayor as well.
What I do remember, Counselman Green, is that the court, Supreme Court did direct the General Assembly to fund the county courts, and the Supreme Court said it one or two, or maybe even three times, and by the third or fourth time, the Supreme Court said, okay, you've satisfied our mandate, as the Council President suggested it. There may be more going on behind the scenes. But I don't recall the court itself ever stepping into such a lawsuit, because from the court's perspective, right now, there's state legislation that requires us to step in, the city.
Right.
And provide the funding. And so from the courts, the court has, in the past years, have sued the city for the city not providing, in the court's judgment, sufficient funding. But from the court's perspective, they don't really care where they get it from, the city or the state.
Gotcha, okay. So continuing on my line of questions. Mr. Lante, good afternoon. Just had some questions, looking at the budget detail, Pages 14 under the general fund, Pages 27 and Page 29. 27 is on the aviation, and 29 is on the community development fund. There are a number of investigative matters that are listed to various outside counsel. Can you just give me a general sense of what those matters may be?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'll just catch up on...
Page 14 in the budget detail, Page 27 and Page 29. 29 is the aviation fund.
Ours doesn't have page numbers, that's why.
Oh.
So we're catching up a little bit.
You gotta talk to Rob the bill.
Apologize.
Yeah. It's under your Class 200, special services.
Okay, I see it. Yes.
But, and both the general fund, community development fund, aviation fund, it has various investigative matters, and that's the, I've seen them slightly in the past, but never that many from so many different various firms. If you can just give me some general perspective.
On the investigative matters?
Right.
All right, let me see. Legal services. Oh, yes, yes, I see. For investigative matters, you're asking what they relate to?
Yeah, is it just generally, is it for, I mean, give me just a sense of what they...
Yeah, I mean, I can't really get into details. What I can say is that if there are any investigations being conducted, we have to retain counsel for certain individuals, and that is because we want, we have to avoid conflict with the city. And so we're able to, that's what that refers to.
Got it, got it, got it. Couple other things. So you talked in your testimony about the efforts you've had, and I'll commend you on the efforts you've had in reference to bringing diverse attorneys into the law department. What have been some of the challenges of trying to maintain the momentum this year and going forward? I know you talked about a diversity initiative you had, but what are some of the challenges? And what is happening in some of the other law departments and other jurisdictions around the country, and what they're trying to do in this end?
The, to be frank, the greatest challenge we have is salary in effort to, I think we can bring folks in, I mean, our starting salary is $50,865, but I think we, just from being out in the community, I go to barrister's meetings, I'm in Hispanic Bar Association, I try to be very visible and present, so that folks know that, you know, there's a place for them in the law department. But I think the, what it's clear to us is that at a certain point, folks look at us and said, well, you know, I have other opportunities. And because, unlike the DA's office and defenders, we have, many of our attorneys are doing work that they can do at corporate law firms, they have opportunities to go there. Or we recently lost two attorneys to the school district, they can go to other public entities. And the reason I mention that is because that impacts attrition, and a lot of the attrition is felt most heavily by attorneys of color. And so I always recognize that you can recruit and bring people in, but if you really want to be able to retain them, that's going to be a consistent issue. And to echo some of the things you've probably heard from the DA's office, what we've tried to do nationally is that I work, I'm a board member of the International Municipal Lawyers Association, so it's all those city solicitors from across the country. In fact, we're bringing them here, the top 50 in Philadelphia, we're hosting them, and we talk about other ways that you can try to create morale, right? Nominate folks for prizes, encourage people, make people feel very welcome. But at the end of the day, you know, it comes down to the salary, and thinking about ways that we can address that. Because as you recall, if you graduate from law school, given the current tuition, you're looking at a six-figure debt load, and, you know, and that's something that we keep thinking about, and we keep trying to be very creative, and we're in conversations with different people to try to address that.
I have one more question in this round. You mentioned the issue of sanctuary cities, and my concern is not as much at the federal level, but more at the state level regarding legislation, and I know we've had some meetings in that regard. Has there been any coordination with any of the legal departments for some of the counties in the Commonwealth? I know the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania has been watching this legislation, but I was curious about any of the other counties, that some of our members of the General Assembly, I don't think have full understanding how that legislation that came out of Senate would impact their county.
Yes, the state, and we've been, we've spent most of our attention on SB 10, because that's the legislation that has the most momentum in Harrisburg. And what we've done is, we've, I've had conversation with other solicitors, and because we want to reframe the conversation as being one around, not one of Harrisburg versus Philadelphia, it's Harrisburg versus 34 other counties, according to ACLU, who also do not honor detainers without a warrant. And so that if people feel like they're voting to try to defund Philadelphia, or to expose us to tort liability, they're actually voting to defund their own municipalities, their own counties, and also subject those to tort liability.
Right.
And one of the push I've been trying to make, this is just, not just in the law, but also in the messaging and the conversation, is that, you know, this is more than just about Philadelphia. We're the most visible example, but there are counties who would never consider themselves sanctuary cities or municipalities or refuges defined by SB 10, but are also potentially would fall under it. And so we, and sometimes it's a surprise to them, but if you look at the definition, because they have to honor the Third Circuit case, which essentially requires a warrant, then, you know, they're putting it between a rock and a hard place. And that's why I think the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania has come out pretty strong against SB 10, and we hope that they continue that momentum. Because it's, we think the state challenges are much more challenging, and they're more imminent than at the federal level.
Yeah, I agree. Has there been any, and I'm not sure if I've read or heard of any commentary from Governor Wolf, what his position is on SB 10?
I'm not aware of any where his position is, but I can say that, you know, we're in conversation with our state partners about the legal infirmities with some of the things coming out of Harrisburg.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. I have some more questions, I'll come back around.
Okay, Councilman, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Solicitor, and your team. Thank you for being here. Just, you were talking about sanctuary cities, and, you know, I want to thank you, your team, and the administration for the willingness to actually have public conversation in explaining to community groups in my district about, you know, the misperception of what a sanctuary city is, and the reality that public safety is first and foremost, no matter what, and that we have our local jurisdiction here, in our court system, that really, you know, controls, you know, if a crime is committed, you know, not sure on the severity of it, but, you know, if somebody commits a crime, you know, the appropriate laws will apply to that regardless of status.
Absolutely.
You know, so, you know, I had a community meeting with all of my community, registered community organization presidents in my district, and, you know, the combination of your department and the mayor's office explaining to my community groups, you know, the reality of what is a sanctuary city, you know, the, you know, the, I think the PR and spin from national politics really having some legs. I think they were enlightened. I mean, they, I mean, some, you know, understood, and some still had some questions, but I think they all left, you know, understanding that sanctuary city is really the Fourth Amendment, right? And I know, you know, we're trying to send that message out, so a few community organizations, and I figure this is the appropriate time to mention it publicly, that a few of my RCOs enjoyed the opportunity to have a conversation on what a sanctuary city is, and they want to offer that to their membership, all right, to the public at large and their defined areas. So we're going to be doing that over the summer and in the fall in smaller, in smaller groups, which is, I think, is going to be helpful to you and the city, I hope, and, you know, have that continued support there.
And I appreciate that, Counselman Heenan, because a lot of the time I spend on sanctuary cities is actually trying to explain to people that we're complying with the Constitution and what that means, and why a criminal warrant is different from an ICE detainer. And I think that that often requires, and I appreciate you for inviting Mayor Enriquez, Brian Abenathen, Jim Engler to your district, sometimes requires talking to people who may not necessarily agree with you, but they don't understand. And, you know, and I think they want to feel engaged, and that's one thing that we've been trying to do.
It is, and, you know, I encourage other members to do the same in their district. I encourage, you know, in any opportunity that you have where people are questioning what a sanctuary city is, what it means, that we really take advantage of having that conversation, because it was, it had a positive outcome.
That's good to hear.
It's, a lot of politics goes into play with it, but the reality is, public safety is first, first and foremost. And that message needs to get out, you know, work with the Criminal Justice Center. We had just alone, so this morning, we had the CJC, or not the CJC, I apologize, the First Judicial District, you know, we're talking about what hell it was created. I mean, First Judicial District is in, you know, I mean, we pay, they receive grants from the state, I guess, to satisfy the court's ruling, so they're in compliance, you know, but, you know, we do pay our First Judicial District. But in their presentation this morning, they showed on their data that almost 5,000 interpreters for the court system, all right? And that's not everybody, you know, when we're talking about sanctuary cities, I mean, it's 5,000, that's only a fraction of the different communities, all right, and different languages that we speak here in our city, which goes to, you know, we need to tread lightly, and we need to publicly, you know, continue to talk about what's in the best interest, you know, of our city. We, last budget, last year, we were talking about, you know, having a 36-day delay in addition to, you know, the process for signing contracts and moving, you know, with procurement. And we, the city has initiated an electronic signature pilot initiative. My understanding that has gone well, and, you know, it's with in coordination with the law department. Can you just confirm that it is, you know, in fact, you know, with new technology, with the electronic signature, we're going to be able to, you know, have prompt pay and move things a little more quicker through our process?
Yeah, and I gave a little highlight in, I think, before, but the system allows us, the goal is to, you know, try to move away from paper, and I can give you an example from where I sit as a department head. I get an email saying I have a contract, and you're the responsible signer, and that allows me to go in there, I click a button, it's digitally signed, it's authorized, and it goes. That same, that same contract, you know, a month ago, it'd be a stack this high before me. And I think that's allowed for quick coordination, also, not just within the city, but also with folks who are outside the city who are contracting with us. And one of the things, in addition to just the electronic contracts, is we also evaluate ACIS, because not all the contracts are electronic, to figure out ways, we've been talking to the chief administrative office, and trying to figure out ways to reduce the time it takes. There are multiple steps, and it'll take me hours to explain the archaic system behind that. But to try to move quickly, so that you don't have the delays, not just for the initial contract, but also, most of our contracts are renewals, right? So you shouldn't have renewals that take longer than the initial contract. And most of our renewals are really just for time or amount, they're not substantive portions of the contract.
So it was a successful pilot initiative?
It's a successful pilot, yeah. The challenge is sort of expanding it to other programs.
Because I know where it's at, and we hear it a lot, and, you know, having that kind of program that coordinates with some of our legacy, or legacy programs that we have here, you know, when it comes to technology, it's just so much needed.
Yeah.
So I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselman. Counselman Jones?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Solicitor.
Good afternoon, Counselman Jones.
No disrespect, but the reason I'm late, I had to decide between hearing you, or this delectable piece of chicken that I really wanted.
I never stood a chance.
I just want you to know, I chose you. Put that chicken in my office.
We don't believe that, sir. We don't believe that.
Um, I probably missed this question, but I might ask it again. First of all, thank you for giving us the heads-up about sanctuary cities and our potential exposures. I've been like Paul Revere, going up to the state, asking them, and they looked at us when I raised it at some of the board levels, are we preparing a Plan B? They looked at me, for what? And like, this would never happen. And so since then, I think they've caught up with your thinking that we should be prepared always, both legally and financially, to assume that that could happen. Can you update us as to where the case is now, how our exposures look?
You mean on sanctuary cities, or...
Yes, sanctuary cities. So I know there was some court movement.
Yeah, where we are in sanctuary cities is, as much as sanctuary cities is seen, is put in the political realm, much of our work began under the Obama administration. The Department of Justice had advised us that we have to certify with respect to some grants. So at that point, we actually started evaluating this. And what I did is, by retaining two firms, firms who, one is doing it pro bono, that's Deckert, and one, $25,000... two firms, firms who, one is doing it pro bono, that's Deckard, and one at $25,000 cap, a very affordable rates to city. We have folks who are actually looking at this deeply. There's no live legal case on sanctuary cities. There was a ruling that was issued last week out of San Francisco, Judge Oric, and his order was on the executive order. So, he said that it was issued a temporary restraining order that the administration, the Trump administration can invoke the executive order to defund so-called sanctuary cities. That doesn't really impact Philadelphia because we still have to certify by June 30th that we comply with federal law. We will certify by June 30th that we still comply. And then that puts the onus on the administration to tell us if they disagree. And at that point, you know, we have our options open, but I can tell you that, you know, we meet weekly, both within the administration and also the lawyers. We talk, we have conference calls every week or so, just to be able to go through the legal issues, because it's one of those things that, it's a gift that keeps giving for a lot of politicians, everybody wants to talk about it. But it's rarely defined and it rarely is discussed in a way that actually is within the law. So, what, how can the federal government do this? If they want to defund Philadelphia, what do they have to do? And that's what we're preparing for. And as Councilman Green indicated, for us, we've always thought that the state is a more imminent threat, in part because federally, we can argue the Tenth Amendment, that, you know, we're separate sovereign. But as you know very well, that we are a creature of the state, subject to the Home Rule Charter and the Constitution, so they can make us do certain things. But they can't make us do things that are unconstitutional. And that's what SB 10 purports to do as we understand it.
So, at greater risk, aren't entitlements there discretionary grants from your old briefing that you gave us? Is the discretionary grants?
Yeah, I mean, SB 10 speaks very generally about grants, and our view's always been that there's certain grants that are, that the state has to give us, or, you know, so we think that it really applies, would apply to discretionary grants. And we're evaluating what that means, how much that is, and where we go from there. But for instance, you know, for child welfare, we have certain children in need and they give us those funds. We think that the state can't possibly intend that we lose that simply because of its policy. That has, one has nothing to do with each other. I think it applies to funds where the state says, well, we can give it to somebody else. We don't have to give it to you. We don't like your policy, we're going to give it to somebody else. And we're investigating that.
One other aside, how are we doing with lawsuits due to everything from slip and fall to people bringing suit by way of abuse, whether in DHS or whether in police actions based on the Police Advisory Committee? What is our exposure there?
I'll speak very generally and Craig can get into more detail. Actually, our police lawsuits are basically the ones most concerned about shootings, they've gone down. And we also, one of the things about suits related to DHS, for instance, is that the legal threshold is very high. So, many seasoned attorneys recognize that they're not likely going to prevail if they sue the city because they have to show that we created the danger, you know, something happens that we were aware of it and we did something like that. They're often find that it's more useful to sue a provider or sue someone else. But we're seeing that trending down. And in part, I can be honest, that it's a lot of the work that Commissioner Ross and Commissioner Ramsey did with the Department of Justice.
Body cams, mics?
Body cameras, we think, will help. Some of the pilot studies have shown that they actually reduce complaints and they reduce claims of excessive force, because you say the police did A, but then we actually have the body camera, they can tell you what happened. And Craig will follow up.
If I can talk to you too about the indemnities fund, and if you look at how that's worked this fiscal year, there is not needed to be a transfer ordinance to increase the amount. We're within the budget of what we were expecting to be in, and we, at this point, believe we're going to make it through the fiscal year without any additional money and without having to delay payments into the next fiscal year. So, I think from looking at it from a sort of number of lawsuits and the settlements, we're in a very good position based on sort of how the law department takes a proactive stance in looking at training of police officers, training of streets employees, making sure that the water department personnel know sort of what their requirements are. And all of our litigation units also serve as sort of an advisory unit and a training opportunity, and we take advantage of that.
In the back example, we had, in fiscal year 2012, we had 119 cases of excessive force. That's down to 56. And so, that shows the downward trajectory that we're seeing because of being proactive.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Don, please.
I'm in, and good afternoon, Solicitor.
Good afternoon, Councilman Don.
I have one question for you. How you doing? Following up on Councilman Jones's questions on the litigation, in your testimony, it says the number of incoming lawsuits in '16 or 2020 and in '18 or 2044, pretty much the same. And the number of cases closed litigation in '16 were 1525 and '18 1504, pretty close to the same. But the difference is, the number of cases closed with pay in '16 were 605. And you're estimating 848 in '17 and 873 in '18, which is a 45% increase of cases you've had to close by paying off. And the ones without pay is about a 30, 25 to 30% decrease. And so, what I'm missing here, though, is the total dollars, because it could be that we had a lot of small cases with small amount of money. I don't know the total dollars to really understand what's going on. But if you could get us the total dollars that were involved, that would be helpful. And if you have any answers as to why there were so many more cases we settled with pay versus without pay than two years ago.
Yeah, and I can get you, our total dollars are tied to indemnities, so we have that. And as Craig indicated, we're not seeing there substantial increase in that. So, it may just be like there's lots of small cases, they don't really have a lot of impact on the dollars. And oftentimes, it's better just to settle them just to make it go away.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But we can get you those figures.
Sometimes it's better to settle than to spend the labor and deal with them. The other question I had has to do with, you mentioned on page one of your testimony that in fiscal year '17, the law department expects to increase delinquent collections year-over-year in business taxes by 15%, real estate 5%, water 35%, and in bankruptcy by 15. Is there any specific strategy you're going to employ to collect these taxes?
Yeah, we do. And luckily, it's Francis Beckley, our chief revenue counsel, who can articulate that for you.
Just identify yourself, for showing.
Good afternoon. I'm Francis Beckley, B-E-C-K-L-E-Y. I'm chief counsel to the Revenue Department. I'll take those in order. The biggest innovation we anticipate in the next fiscal year will be large-scale sheriff sale for water. We currently do do some in-house work on sheriff sales for water debt. However, our IT system right now cannot hold eligible expenses and attorney's fees, so we are unable to send any of that work to co-counsel, for outside counsel to do sheriff sales. We are starting happily to deplete our inventory of really large real estate tax cases for sheriff sale. So, we're very much looking forward to being able, we're hoping to have the IT work done sometime in the fourth quarter of this calendar year and to start using, we have a lot of low-hanging fruit in the water debt area, a lot of really big liens. So, we want to start to be able to send those out in addition to doing them internally.
So, in the five-year plan, it said the water debt collection, do you have an idea what the total delinquency is from the Water Department?
I'm sorry, I don't have that with me today.
Okay. I heard numbers of like $250 million.
There's an awful lot of water debt. I think we will discover, as we did with real estate tax debt, that both a combination of better enforcement and also just better investigation. I think the water books right now are fairly messy and there's a bunch of uncollectible stuff and stuff that's not actually due. I know we are still negotiating stormwater fees with the Commonwealth, for example. It's not clear that they're liable to pay all of that. So, I think we'll get that settled. One thing that the Revenue Commissioner has instituted that has been very useful discipline is we meet with him quarterly and we look at the top 50 business tax cases, the top 50 real estate tax delinquencies, and the top 50 water debt delinquencies. Now, I can tell you, for example, when we met last time on real estate, there are only five cases of real estate delinquency that are over half a million now. A few years ago, you know, you easily had 20 that were multimillion.
That's good news, I guess, but it's mind-boggling to think we had over 20 over half a million dollars.
Oh, you know, it was, you know, and part of that was bad bookkeeping. You know, we had, for example, exempt railway properties that were in there for big liabilities. Well, you can't sue and effectively enforce if you don't know what's actually in your inventory.
Does railroad properties pay real estate taxes?
Not when they're in active use. It's like something that belongs to a charity. If they're actually using it for railroad purposes, then it's exempt. If they're just holding it in their inventory, then they have to pay real estate taxes on it. So, it's a case-by-case examination.
Okay. I'll come around the second round. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Solicitor Talante, you talked in your testimony about a front of litigation and some significant legal victories. But from, I guess, a more proactive perspective, do you envision any areas where the Solicitor's Office will take in any type of litigation matters?
The answer will be unsatisfying, yes, but I can't really discuss. I can brief you privately, but there are some significant matters that we're working on, which, as you know, these things, particularly big matters, they take a lot of time. And often, in these cases I'm thinking about, we have to get outside counsel, potentially on contingent basis. But we are working on those, and I'm prepared to brief you.
Yeah, I was just wanting to, I didn't want to assume that you had some things in the pipeline, but we could talk offline about some of those initiatives.
Absolutely.
Also, just some other things that'll be impacting the city from a, some of a legal perspective. And I'm curious if you've been monitoring from the Education Law Center's lawsuit regarding fair funding to school districts across the Commonwealth, especially in city Philadelphia, commercial assessments that are going through now. Any thoughts you may have from a legal perspective on that impact on the city?
We haven't evaluated a direct impact, but we've been actively and openly supporting the Education Law Center's lawsuit. We filed them amicus in that suit. I went to the, I went to, or argument. In fact, we've been in discussions because we anticipate that a ruling should come down any time, based on where, times, date of argument and when the date of issuance. But we haven't done any evaluation because, as I suspect, depending on a ruling, you know, if it's positive, it's just, there are some more procedural steps. So, we'll have time, if necessary, to be able to look how it impacts. Because as you know, the school district is not a party, but if the ruling is broad enough, it may include the district.
Yeah, I just wanted to check how the office is monitoring those, that matter. And then, you also talked about e-procurement. I've been very active in promoting best value, but there's some other procurement concepts that we're looking at. I've been talking with people from the Procurement Department regarding how we can unbundle some of our contracts as another way of trying to get contracts in a smaller perspective for businesses in our city. And I saw maybe we'll probably be having a conversation both with Procurement, which we've already started that conversation, and also with representatives from the Law Department as well.
Yeah, we'll be happy to participate.
Okay. And one last thing, you mentioned about the International Municipal Lawyer Association. I also get those very long, detailed emails. You said there's an event coming up soon or?
Yes, every year, they have, it's called the Top 50. So, they write the top 50 largest counties or municipalities to go and talk about, you know, best practices. Last year was in Atlanta. And we're fortunate enough to actually have to host it here in Philadelphia.
What's the time period for that?
It's June 2nd and June 3rd.
June 2nd, June 3rd, okay.
Yeah, so in fact, one of the things we're talking about is sanctuary cities. We're talking about law firm management, how we can, we can advocate for salaries and for quality of life for our attorneys, because we have some of the same challenges across cities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Don?
Mr. Chairman, first I wanted to just make a statement that I appreciate the cooperation from your department and many of your attorneys, especially many of them who I've talked to about tax collections and some of those other interests that we have. So, they've done a great job. So, I just want to commend them. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, on your budget, I have to tell you, I may have missed this because I came a little late, but seems to me that you're requesting a million dollars or less.
Yes, you did miss it.
And that should be reiterated, though. That's good.
Yeah.
And so, I just want to make sure I understand, purchase of services, those are for, are those services for the outside law firms that represent us on different issues?
That's correct. What we, last year, we actually sought, and thank you to counsel for approving a transfer ordinance to allow us to increase our Class 200 in anticipation of the bargaining, the negotiations for fire, police, and DC 47. But with the experience we had with DC 33, it was clear to us that with Deputy Mayor Rich Laser and the Office of Labor Relations leading negotiations, we've been able to get our outside counsel costs down. Because historically, we project out, so the four or five years before, we knew that, you know, they're up in the six, seven figures. And based on that example, we are able to talk to budget and say, we don't think we'll need that additional money that was transferred for this fiscal year because we can handle that, a lot of that stuff in-house. And that's what we've been able to do. And that's what accounts for the reduction.
But this will account for the, any outside legal fees for the beverage issue?
Yeah, that's a counter for.
And sanctuary city issues?
Absolutely. On sanctuary cities, most of the work is being done pro bono at a very minimal cost to city.
And so, the other question I have is, you know, we just did a, just was announced, we revised our commercial assessments. And there's going to be probably a lot of tax appeals for the commercial assessments, I'm guessing, okay? And so, my question, I've said this publicly, are we equipped from a legal standpoint to represent the city's interests in these tax appeals? And does that come through your department or is that through OPA?
It does come to our department. We have an attorney assigned to OPA, Drew Altinger, and I don't know how he does it. But we've been in discussions with him. He believes he's in a position where he can handle it.
Let me just say this, because I'm getting the emails from all these other law firms who've like created a cottage industry for them of representing all the owners who got increases. And if you came to us and said, you know, I need X amount more dollars, whether it's a million or $2 million more to have representation at OPA, it's well worth it because we're talking about $118 million of commercial assessments.
Yeah, and one of the things we'll do is, we, no matter what we project, we'll see how things are going. Because at the same time, as you recognize, Councilman Don, it may be a case where, you know, a little bit of money here saves you a lot of money down the line. But we'll work with Drew, because he's the person who does this for us and see in terms of his capacity.
Okay. One other question I had on the pensions collection, pension collections? I noticed in, I guess, in the five-year plan, the law department worked to recover 2.1 million in illegal trading profits taken by a brokerage firm that handles certain transactions with Board of Pensions and Retirement. But we're still seeking recovery of another 1.9 million. Is there any status on that?
I'm just trying to find.
It's on the pension collections.
In the five-year plan or in?
Yes.
That was five-year plan.
And how do, by the way, not only is there any status, but how do we, is, can the law department set up some sort of set of standards for the pension people on investing to avoid these kind of situations going forward?
Yeah, I mean, I think our pension staff, the attorneys, do work with the folks at Pension on the front end. But oftentimes, with that, you know, if somebody's, if somebody's this unscrupulous, there's really nothing you can do to prevent it. But it's something that, you know, we're aware of. Fortunately here, we're able to identify and be able to.
Is there any status on collecting the balance of 1.9 million?
I'll look into that. I don't know what the current status is.
All right. Let me see here. Oh, one other question. You mentioned also on April 6, there were approximately 1,020 city-owned properties approved for transfer into the land bank?
Yes.
Have these properties been transferred?
I'm not sure. I can check my staff.
Okay. And are there any plans in order to sell these properties, mainly because we, I've been told, we spend almost $20 million annually maintaining our vacant properties?
I mean, I think that with the land bank, our role is clear, if there's property in the land bank, to have finance and, you know, councils involved to evaluate them and see, you know, what it makes sense to keep and what makes sense to be sold.
So, is that happening now, to move them through the system? So is that happening now, to move them through the system?
They're actually, their conversation's happening now, and I don't know if you want to hear from.
It's okay, as long as it's going to happen the next, what, 90 days or so?
Please identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Brendan O'Rourke. I'm the chief deputy city solicitor for the Economic Development Investment Unit.
Thank you.
Generally speaking, as far as the land bank goes, Councilman, you know, we continue, we have a couple of staff attorneys who are committed to reviewing and processing the deeds from those properties that have come from city-related agencies and also those who have, that have been approved and offered up by various members of council to go into the land bank. As of right now, I believe, all told, since the land bank got started in honesty and started operating, we're somewhere around the round of 2,500 to 3,000. I know that there's another 200 or 300 that are close to being approved to going into the land bank. Right now, they're just working their way through the process on the city end. And those are city properties, those are not city-related properties.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick question. A lot of discussion started under the DA's testimony as to parity of salaries. How do, how do you do with attrition, and is there a high attrition rate with you? And then, how do you rank, by way of salary, the attorneys that work for you versus the DA versus the Defenders Association?
Of course, I'm going to say mine are poorest.
Of course. I, I, I lobbed that up, just.
No, one of, one of the, for parity, first, I don't think you can really do an adequate parity study that includes us with the DA's office and the defenders, because we don't do criminal cases, and the market for what we do is greater, so to speak. So Brendan O'Rourke, his units, they do economic development, they do a commercial and land acquisitions. Their folks leave to go to law firms, and, and, you know, the starting salary for a first-year associate at major law firms is $180,000, and that's what we're competing with. And if you have the ability and the experience of having handled large transactions like the gallery, like Love Park, you're going to be very much in demand by law firms. I know the only way you can do an apples-to-apples comparison is perhaps with the defenders, their child advocates, and our child welfare unit, because they're, they're both in family court. But for the vast majority of other things, we just don't do what they do.
So I won't dare try to argue with a solicitor, however.
Everybody else does.
Yeah, but I, I'm gonna pass on it. What are your starting salaries?
Our starting salary is $50,865. And what we, one of the, one of the challenges we also face is that, again, many of our attorneys, they, from the law department, they go to other agencies within the city or public agencies, they get paid substantially more. And I mentioned the school district, but if they go to redevelopment authority, they go to other places.
So how do you do with attrition and turnover?
I pray a lot. I, I, one of the things that, you know, we've been trying to do is really focus on morale, try to encourage people, tell them that they're doing a good job. We do a lot on attorney development, right? So, working with my team, we get, we get more of our people into trainings. We nominate them for awards, so, you know, the Philadelphia Business Journal just recognized two days ago Marcel Pratt and Melissa Knight, who's on Labor and Employment Unit, as millennials. I wish I was a millennial, but, you know, up-and-coming millennials. But to be able to let the rest of the world know the great attorneys we have in the law department, and also to encourage the attorneys in the department that we have their back, that, you know, if you go out there in court, you know, you're going to be developed, and the judges will respect you, and that you're a good attorney. And one of the things that, I didn't, I didn't grow up in the law department, so to speak, I came from other agencies, but I wanted to tell people that you gotta, we gotta be out there letting people know how good we are, so that when we advocate for ourselves, you know, we're echoing what people think instead of saying, oh, really, you're from the law department? And so we work a lot on morale, but at a certain point, the attorney will say, well, what have you done for me lately? And that's where we lose people.
So what is your turnover rate?
We, actually, the good news is that we've reduced it. We had it, for attorneys, our attrition is down to 8.7%. It was 18% two years ago. And that's partly as a result of all the ways that we've been trying to, you know, promote morale. I go, I see attorneys in court, you know, I get feedback from judges, I let them know that they're doing a great job. We send out emails if somebody had a successful outcome. I tell the mayor if there's an NFL draft or some big event, acknowledge the role that the law department played in that, because we often have the invisible part, and I think it's important for people to know the work we're doing on a day-to-day basis.
So, Mr. Solicitor, we, in my office, try to employ that. I come in every day, I tell them, you're doing a good job, I tell them you're valued. And still, my staff grow up and go run for office and get elected. I don't know what to do, so I'm glad you're.
Yeah, we keep trying.
I keep trying.
That is frustrating, isn't it, Councilman?
It is frustrating. Don't you hate that when that happens? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Neil?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always interesting with attorneys. The, I just want to tell you that I, now, it's almost a year and a half, really recognize a, a improvement, at least in how I, in my office, have been dealing with the solicitor's office. And there's been ups and downs over the years, but it's been a while, and we've had this conversation, but I want to have it publicly, that I really see that kind of effort, that responsive effort, as we talked about when you were being considered initially for confirmation, that, you know, we want the solicitor's office to feel like there are attorneys and us feel that, we feel the same way. And I feel that, very much so. And that, again, has not always been the case. But even yourself, which is where it all starts and stops, not that I've called you a lot, but you've been very responsive, quickly, meeting in person, talking about something, considering it. Some things we're still, one particular matter we're still talking about, not for today's hearing, but I want to tell you it's been noticed and it's appreciated.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Sanchez.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Councilman Greenly made me promise I was going to hurry up, because I was trying to get you out of here, so lucky you. I want to thank you on the issue around sanctuary cities, and I know I was listening to some of the discussion downstairs in my office, and really appreciate you going out and really informing folks about how important we believe in public safety and people's rights. And, you know, it's as simple as, you know, and I think we should use this analogy, it's as simple as, no one's going to let a police officer come and look in their house without a warrant, right? It'd be easy if Commissioner Roth could sign warrants, right? People would say, no, that's not enough. The commissioner can't decide, he's going to write his own administrative warrant and go into someone's house. Everybody wants a warrant. And that's essentially what we're here doing, is defending the law, which I believe the law is on our side, you know how strongly I believe that. And to the extent that we could better articulate to the residents that we are not putting them in harm's way, that it is ill-informed, mean-spirited people that are putting them in harm's way. Because I think, you know, we're sticking to our constitutional guns, so I just think that's important, and I appreciate the support we get from all of council. In that spirit, I know that the mayor has authorized you to seek legal counsel. Is there anything else in terms of coordinating legal strategies that the city is undertaking that we should be aware of?
I can, I can speak in very general sense, just to protect the city's legal interest. On sanctuary cities, we've been very intentional about listening to everyone who want to help us. And so I think for the first time, it's certainly a long time, we've been very much out there with the Bar Association, with the ACLU, with Pill Cop, with some folks who are actually, we're more familiar with them suing us and them working together, because we recognize that there's, one, there's a real threat to the city, but two, there's a, there's a threat to the spirit of the city. So it's not even like the amount of money we may face to lose or legal jeopardy, is the conversation people are having about our immigrants, or people are having about people who may look like an immigrant, right? Some people, you, you, are you an immigrant, you know, if you start asking them about status, that's offensive to some people, because, you know, say, why I'm not, you know, I'm not an equal citizen. So we've been, because ACLU brought the Galarza case, they're actually been very helpful because they know what the, what the state of play is across the state, right? They can tell us which counties, we have which policies, which will allow us to talk to those counties, because something that comes, a statement that comes from Franklin County may have, may have, may be perceived differently than if it comes from Philadelphia. And I think every time people say, again, it's Harrisburg doesn't like Philly, Philly needs to be defunded, I try to make very clear that this impacts a lot of other counties, because they're protecting the Constitution. And so, and we also, some of, some of the people who, we want to be able to arm our allies to be able to talk about this in a consistent way. So oftentimes, people exaggerate things in a not helpful way, and so we want to, you know, bring them in and saying, actually, if we're a sanctuary city, in our city, we don't interfere with ICE. If ICE is in operation, we don't get in their way and try to stop that. We don't have the legal authority to do that.
Yeah, I think there's a misconception about our lack of cooperation, and Councilwoman Giman and I met with ICE, and it was pretty intense. And, and there are many, many instances where the city and the police force do cooperate with ICE. I mean, this notion that we're an uncooperating city is not an accurate one. And then, real quickly, you were, I know Councilwoman Hina was asking you about the procurement process, and I know we're looking at all, some of the online and some of the other issues. What is the role of the law department, particularly as it relates to change orders and amendments? And how do we help expedite that? Because so many times, and you know, they're always, they always say it's at the law department, right?
Yes.
They always say that, right?
I say that, no, no.
So what, what role does the law department play in those amendments that really impact payment? And what can we do to enhance that?
Well, one of the, one of the things that we started talking with the CAO, and I know Craig Strachan can amplify this, is that they've given us a proposal, which we're considering, that with an amendment, instead of going through the same process, which we go through as a new contract, that is, you know, we review, we do, if it's really just an amendment, as most of our amendments are, as to amount and time, there's a way we can shortcut those steps. And I think in procurement, they write a letter or something like that.
Right.
We're considering doing that, and we think if we are able to do that, that will substantially, so we can focus our time on actually new contracts, and then be able to put the amendments in a faster track. And I know Craig, Craig and Valerie Robinson are meeting with the CAO pretty regularly on this.
Yeah, and we've gone over the metrics and the data to try to make sure that we're meeting our requirements and how to sort of categorize.
Right, and I think this speaks to, and I know we've been working with the CAO office, we had hearings, we want to have further hearings after the budget process, you know, it is very chilling to know that July 1st, when we open up for business, we have so very little executed and conformed contract. That is a bad business practice, right? Because we treat our stakeholders in a way that's disrespectful, in that if we value the work and the business that they're doing for us, that they should have that conformed contract. And what I'd like to see from the law department's perspective, obviously working with the CAO's office, is, you know, if there's a way for you to begin to track that, I think there are patterns there around, I mean, these are the same contracts every year, right? We go through this every year for us to see the variation between, particularly in the human services area, and I really saw this during the state budget crisis, which we might be in, again, given what we're reading in the paper, that we had stakeholders that weren't getting paid four, five, or six months. And they're encumbering expenses on a letter, right? And I don't think we get value when, because then we're negotiating after expenses have been incurred, you know, how you negotiate whether the service needed to be conducted, we, it really leaves us at a disadvantage. And to me, is if July 1st is day one, and we're opening the door as a business, July 1st, people's contracts should be getting processed now. Now, I know there's an issue around the budget amounts, the budget gets approved late, and that's the excuse, let me repeat that, that is the excuse people use, because popping in a number is not preparing a contract. We should be better along on this, this part. And I just think that one of the things I'd like you to be is more involved in tracking that and seeing what are the patterns, particularly what are the patterns with departments who may abuse? We have a big concern around in our Capitol office around the utilization of change orders for people who are lowest bidders, and then milk the system, and I think there are patterns there. And to the extent that you're using your role in that to look at some of that will be important. But I strongly encourage you to figure out what, how you can streamline that, you know, I think we're like 97 days from beginning to end in this process. We got to do better business. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. No other questions, Solicitor and everyone? Okay, Councilwoman Parker?
No question, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say a hearty thank you to the law department for some legislative assistance you all have provided, particularly for the benefit of residents of the 9th District, and you helped, and you did it exceedingly well, so I wanted to say thank you for the record, because if it was the opposite way, I would say that on the.
Yes, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilwoman Parker.
And I think we all appreciate what you all do, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you do. Our next department, the public defender, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If I could ask, as people are leaving, to please leave quietly so we can proceed quickly, because pretty soon the public will be coming in here for the public testimony.
We don't want that again.
So, ma'am, public defender, if, we have your written testimony. If you could summarize, I know some of us have questions or comments, so we'd appreciate it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes, Councilman Greenly, and I guess I would be thanking Councilman President Clark for allowing me the opportunity to share my testimony on my 2018 budget appropriation. My name is Keira Bradford-Grey, and I am the chief defender of the Defender Association of Philadelphia. With me is Mr. James McHugh, who is my first assistant, as well as Ms. Kristen Muehl, who is our chief financial officer.
Thank you.
To begin, and I believe you understand that, the Defender Association represents those who cannot afford an attorney in various divisions. Last year alone, in 2016, the Defender Association represented 62,182 of Philadelphia's residents. Many of them are Philadelphia's residents, some were not, I should say. We represented them in various different hearings, including criminal cases, juvenile delinquency cases, child welfare cases, that's child abuse and neglect hearings, civil mental health cases and criminal mental health cases, appeals, violations of probation, and the like. That does not include some of the expungement work we do on a daily basis, it also does not include some of the reentry work we engage in, in which I plan to go through on our slide presentation. Just, in, in starting our discussion about the Defender Association, I do want to go into the rich history of that office. We have been around since 1934, and we have been providing legal services before the Supreme Court gave the right to states to provide legal counsel to those who could not afford it. So we have a long history of expertise that we are very proud of. Our office, not only does it provide national, does it provide local expertise and analysis, but it also provides information on legal analysis and legal standards to the state and nationally. Our office was very instrumental in a landmark, in working on a case that changed the legal standards by which juveniles can be sentenced in the United States, leading to a landmark decision by the Supreme Court forcing all states to reevaluate life without parole sentences for juveniles. As such, Philadelphia was called to reexamine a little over 300 individuals who had been sentenced as youth to life without parole in prison. The Defender Association, only representing six of those 300, agreed to take on 225 of those cases. Because of our expertise and our experience, we knew we could do it right, and we could give the city some relief. Instead of hiring 300 lawyers to represent these individuals, we did it ourselves. Our office has steadfastly worked to make sure that we are providing quality representation to those individuals. We have our lawyers that go all across the state, visiting individuals in custody from Gredeford State Prison in Montgomery County, all the way to Erie, Pennsylvania. They travel in pairs, they sleep over, they make sure that they build up a rapport with the client and their family. They try to, they work to understand who the client was at the time of defense, when they were teenagers, and who they are now, some as senior citizens. The type of work that they do is they produce this type of packet for every client. This is a very lengthy packet, and it involves a lot of work. We give this to the district attorney's office for recommendation. We give this to the District Attorney's Office for recommendations and negotiations. We also give it to the courts and the parole board. This type of work is what we're capable of. And this is throughout history, the type of information that we have produced. I will be remiss if I did not say that I am proud to be the Executive Director of the Defender Association. I started my legal career there, and I have firsthand knowledge of the type of legal scholars, social justice advocates, and leaders that that office produces. But, in all, knowing that we have a rich history of legal analysis and trial work, we now come to today's time. And we know that we have a unique position to help with some of the current issues that we see, we find ourselves in, as a result of a lot of past practices in our criminal justice system. We are now in the era of reform. We're reexamining all of the collateral damage that has been done, based on policies that kind of focused on a black and white approach to rehabilitation or criminality. We also, we very much know that criminality is not black and white, there's a lot of gray areas, and we believe that our services are very much needed today, so that we can make sure that we have meaningful reform. And with the wealth of information that the Defender Association takes in, we can bring forth some real meaningful creative solutions to solving some of our problems and making our communities safer. Long before now, public safety has never been echoed out of the mouth of the Defender Association. Or it hasn't been echoed out of the mouths of other people who don't really understand our work. It has been really owned by law enforcement. I believe that we have shown, and we will show, that the Defender Association too helps to make communities safer by working with the individuals that wind themselves to our doorsteps. So as such, we have expanded our mission to not only include great trial advocacy and constitutional expertise, but we have gone into other areas that we understand are necessary for today's time. We look at what caused or created some of these issues. And that is a lack of understanding people that come through our system. And, you know, this is, the net widening of our system allowed us to do what we would call, or some will call, assembly line justice, where we're processing people under the same guise, and everyone has the same situations and have the same needs. We know now that is not true. And so, our office has expanded our mission to identify the social needs of our client, to direct them to meaningful rehabilitation. We also use data and technology to study trends and patterns, so that we know where to put our resources and where to shape our priorities. We also have started to engage and untap the power of the community, so that we can start to make collaborations in areas where our services cannot extend. Some of the areas that we have expanded to, which we are doing in our own structure, in restructuring our office, so that we can produce some of this work, especially in the role of social services. Our office is looking at the problem with mass incarceration, and understanding that mass incarceration is a real issue of less humanization in our system. And so, we seek to provide more information that guides us to how we are supposed to work to better our clients when they come back into their communities, so that they're not a threat, but they are actually productive members, and working productive members of that community, contributing to the tax base. One of the things that our Chief of Social Services has done is create opportunities for us to align people with needed treatment on the same day. Prior to him being creative enough to go out into the community and find meaningful programs to come into our Criminal Justice Center, there was a six to eight wait week to get people connected to services. This meant they were either serving lengthy delays in custody, or they were released without being connected to needed services, which they would pretty much fall into relapse situations, or do things that were more destructive. I think we have a member today of The Wedge, who is one of our partners, and who has agreed to bring his services into our purview, and the judges are elated to have someone that is willing and able to take some of our clients, make the referrals, give it back to the judge so that they can make good recommendations as to alternatives to incarceration. This, in effect, helps to reduce mass incarceration. Mass incarceration doesn't mean we don't need jail at all. It just means that we can make smarter decisions on what to do with people, based on having information at our fingertips and better ways to service our community needs. Another way that we are working to help our system's progress and reducing our prison population is bringing technology into the sphere of our criminal justice system. Our lawyers, our judges, our clients, we teamed up with a wonderful woman, who is a tax attorney, who created an app to help people understand what services were in their own neighborhoods. And our Chief of the Adult Social Service Unit teamed up with this woman and put in many of our Defender services. So now, this app has over 1,200 services that are available in our communities, that are at our fingertips, so that when judges are looking at who should I give an ankle monitor to? Those who don't have a home, how can I give an ankle monitor to them? We can go onto that app, look in terms of housing, and see what's in the neighborhood and the area, call that place, and ask basic questions as to whether or not they will assist the court, and making sure the person has a successful transition back to court to face their charges. So I think that was a very creative way that we brought technology into the sphere of the court, and we're also making it very possible for people to be released by making smart decisions. Another way that the Defender Association really works to improve the quality of our services and improve the outcomes of the individuals coming into our courthouse is by using data. We have become more technologically inclined, we use data to inform the process, we look at trends and patterns of criminality, we look at cases and offenses that are happening in each councilmatic district. We recently gave each council member a snapshot of the types of cases that are occurring in their own districts, and we did it based on the addresses that each of our clients gave us at the time of the representation. Those were reported to each council, and not only did we give them the offense type, we gave them the age, the gender, and the race of those individuals, so they can start to really get a snapshot of what's going on, and work with programs and organizations in their own districts to solve some of their own problems, so that the criminal justice system doesn't have to do it all. We identify challenges, and we work with other individuals that are out there, are working on these challenges, to team up and make sure that we have better opportunities to connect people, so that they are supported in their communities, and they don't have to use this system as a revolving door. Another thing that our Policy Division, that we recently created, allows us to do is bring in money to work on special projects. I mean, the trends and patterns that we see are real. We know and we understand what's driving some of the behaviors, so we want to make sure that we're looking at opportunities to bring in money to work on these projects with our other criminal justice stakeholders, as well as our councilmatic stakeholders and their community members. Under the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge, our policy staff member was very instrumental in securing $490,000 over a period of three years to produce what we call bail advocates. Bail advocates help inform the bail process and some of the bail practices. We have been engaging in this practice for a very short period of time, but we're already seeing a dramatic improvement in some of the decision-making that happened at the very initial stage. Our office represents almost every client in the city who gets, oh, I should say individual, I'm sorry, in the city who gets arrested. And before this, there was no real meaningful opportunity for bail advocacy. Now, we, under the MacArthur Initiative, we are putting in place better practices for bail advocacy. We still have ways to go, and I hope that we look at some of the other reforms that are going around the country, and try to figure out how we fit those things into our system. I think it will make our justice system a much more fair and process, and have better outcomes. We also have secured funding for technical assistance grants, or technical grants, to increase our ability to produce data. That is what allowed us to give some of our information to our city council, to let them see what's going on in their districts, but it also allows us to understand our own practices and where we need to put our resources and attention. And lastly, we were able to secure a $38,000 grant to increase our community outreach. Community outreach is extremely important to us, especially during this time, because we want to be out there, present in the community, to let them understand the extent of our services, as well as be educated by them and educate them about the processes of the criminal justice system, and how they can help us help them. We were also awarded a grant to work on a special project based on the trends and patterns that we saw with some of our juvenile justice female population. They were coming into our justice system in record numbers. We were noticing this, this caused us much alarm. And we embarked on a partnership with Big Brother, Big Sister, to lend their model, which has been proven best practices, to help us provide some meaningful interventions with our juvenile justice youth. That partnership is not the first partnership of its kind. I was actually engaged in the first partnership of that kind, where we teamed up with Big Brother, Big Sister at my old post in Montgomery County. The collateral benefits of that program were amazing. Not only did people make it out of the system, it didn't come back, but they had better results at school, and they had better relationships at home. The types of support systems that Big Brother, Big Sister provides was so instrumental in turning around the trajectory of that youth. We didn't see them back. I think out of a number, I think we had about 40 matches, and it was a short period of time, we only saw three that had some relapses. So I thought that was really good progress, and it brought different approaches to address some of the issues that our youth are facing. Part of our community collaboration is looking at our own work, and looking at our own areas of, to make sure that we're improving our services. And so, we teamed up with the Reentry Think Tank, that's part of the Mayor's Reentry Coalition, so that we can understand where we have been missing the mark on representing our clients and not understanding what's important to them. The Reentry Think Tank has really given us some real truths about how they felt going through the system with some public defenders, and we take this very seriously, because we always want to be better in our service delivery, but we want to be more thoughtful and deliberate. So, allowing them to come in and help us understand some of the intricacies that they are dealing with and that they face in coming out of our system, it allows us to be more thoughtful advocates and provide more, better information to the decision-makers, so that they can make sure that they are understanding everything a person needs in order to be successful when they get out into the community. Like I said, our community partnerships and our community engagement has brought us a wealth of information, but we also bring a wealth of information to those communities. We provide expungement clinics, we provide know-your-rights information, we provide collateral consequence information that are both in English and Spanish. We make sure that we are present in churches, community centers, just to answer general questions that anyone has. We avail ourselves to any council member that has town halls, that needs information about our services or the system's process in general. So we do these, and this is something different than we have done before, but it's really helped us become better. And lastly, not lastly, almost lastly, one of the things that we know about our services is that we are very, very good in training and legal analysis and data-driven solutions. But we also found out through our initiative in MacArthur that our services are actually more efficient than any other council in the system. And I think that is really telling, that you have an organization that represents 62,000 cases a year, that has been deemed to be much more efficient than anyone else. And if you did not have us, you'd pay about $44.5 million in legal representation, based on the number of days that someone would spend in jail, because our services have proven to cut that jail time down by a third, based on our model and structure. So I think that is a real testament to our work, a real testament to the fact that you have this organization that not only partners with you on community safety issues, but also on valid and efficient spending of taxpayer dollars. Another cost savings that we provide this city is through our reentry services. Our reentry unit helps to engage in meaningful early parole, I guess what I would call, packages that they present to the court, so that the court understands that if they were to grant parole early to some individuals, what would they be doing in the community? Will they be supported with real meaningful opportunities to rehabilitate, or will they be a danger when they get back out? 90% of our petitions that we filed have been granted. We saved the city over $7 million in prison costs alone, and that's a very conservative analysis. But I think that work is really a good strength of ours, because we work so closely with the individuals, we work with their families, and we develop a plan based on now understanding some of the needs that they had that we did not understand before. I think that our office is only going to increase these petitions through our MacArthur partnership. We got some money and a grant to provide, I think, 30% more of these parole petitions for individuals in our system, whether or not we represented them initially. There are also some of them where private counsel cases that are now in jail and serving a sentence, that we will grant parole petitions in terms of finding reentry services for them. So that is also going to save the city more money than we already have demonstrated. Now, in order to do all these things, we have to continue to keep experienced lawyers. I know that every organization that came before you today has hammered the fact that there is an attrition problem, based on some of the salaries that we are able to give. We get that we're civil services, we get that we're government, we know we're not private industry, and we're not here to be rich. However, we do think that some of the value that we provide has not been really realized over the past decades. And so, today, we are here to really make the pitch of supporting salary parity for our lawyers and our staff. If you look at this slide, you see that after three years, our lawyers' salaries pretty much stay the same, while our district attorney counterparts' salaries increase, and I would say dramatically, because we've never seen those types of salaries in our office. After year four, I think the district attorney's salaries goes a little above $65,000, while our attorneys still stay at just a little above $50,000. And now, in year five, there is an $18,000 disparity between their lawyers, line assistants, and our lawyers. And I think that's really glaring, because the work that we provide, and I'm not saying that anyone's more important than anyone else, but the work that we provide is equally important, especially in today's time, where there was never really an opportunity for the defenders to present information that would be pertinent to decision-making. The war on crime didn't give us that space. Today, we have that space, and we're willing to step up to the plate and provide it, and we have shown that we've done that time and time again. Our turnover rate for three years is glaring. In 2013, we hired 30 new lawyers, we invested a lot of time, a lot of money into training these lawyers to be well-rounded advocates. After three years, 47% of our lawyers left. After four years, it gets even higher. And a lot of them, upon exit interviews, we understand that many of them just can't stay to support their families or support any kind of lifestyle, whatever that may be, based on the salaries that they are given. Our lawyers don't have pensions, they have to put into their own retirement, so that comes out of their salaries as well. So these things really create a bit of a problem for the Defender Association, to keep good lawyers, to continue to produce the great work that we do. We want to be able to retain these lawyers, because we know experienced lawyers can do the legal analysis necessary, and also the other collateral benefits that city council and our justice system needs at this time. We did a study for public defender salaries around the country, and looked at states that are comparable in size to Philadelphia, and we found that Philadelphia really does start their public defenders at the lowest amount, which is 48.5. I think that's also the lowest amount of the other partners in our city. The city solicitor, as well as the district attorney, they all testified that their starting salaries were above $50,000. The Defender Association's starting salary is at 48,500. And we've pretty much been at that starting salary for about a decade, without having any kind of increase in that, opportunity for increase in that area. And all I wanted to do is come here to present the information that we provided city council prior to this budget testimony, but ask for your support and equal pay for our office and our staff. The work we do is so instrumental, and we will continue to do it, because we love the work, but it is really hard when we continuously have to train new lawyers to get them up to speed. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you for your testimony, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And before I start, I just want to thank you. We referenced earlier the Criminal Justice Reform Committee that you co-chaired, along with our good Councilman Jones and Deputy Commissioner Bethel. Really appreciate your time and service. On that note, we will realize some fruit out of that. You actually covered a number of the questions I had in this, but you know, I jotted down some questions with respect to your testimony. Let me turn it around here. A little crooked here. On the retention issue, and by the way, the district attorney's office, I don't know if anybody told you, they kind of like supported parity.
Yeah, we were watching.
They started out by saying, they said they didn't oppose parity. Oh, you know, a little stronger than that, but...
And I thank Kathleen Martin for the statement.
They kind of alluded to the fact that they recognized that clearly was not parity. In terms of retention, because the district attorney's office talked about the inability to keep attorneys five, they kind of talked about four, five years, and similarly, you talked about the timeline. Is it, in terms of the, I guess in comparison to the DA's office and yours, and I'll understand if you don't know the answer to that question, but are we looking like a similar track that after around... after around four or five years, people kind of go another direction?
Well, what we showed you is after three years, people, we get a huge attrition issue. So three years, we lose almost half of our attorneys that we invest in heavily, and so it just goes up from there. I think last year, we showed you a slide that after five years, we're losing almost sixty-seven percent of our staff that we brought in that previous five-year period.
Okay. Walk me through the court-appointed versus defender's representation. If it's understood that the person does not have the wherewithal to have an attorney represent them in a criminal case, how does that work? Does the court say you will be represented by the defender, or they do the court-appointed?
Yeah.
And for some reason, I have no idea what goes on over there, you know. Is it like, is the court-appointed like probably more last minute, or?
No.
Or is it the defender is, I mean, tell me, what's that process like?
So when a person is arrested, they are arraigned, and that's by a bail commissioner that tells them the charges that they are facing. During that process, our pretrial, court's pretrial division makes a determination as to financial ability to pay for a lawyer.
Okay.
At that time, a court will make a determination as to whether or not someone will get the public defender, and if the public defender has a conflict of interest, meaning we may represent a co-defendant of that person, or we may represent someone that just presents a huge conflict, they will appoint a lawyer at the time of the arraignment to represent the individual if they're deemed.
Throughout the case.
Yes, throughout the case. So that representation begins at the time of arraignment, just like ours. I guess it depends on how quickly the court-appointed lawyer meets with their client, but it's pretty much at the time that someone has been arrested and arraigned on their charges.
So why do we have two different tracks, court-appointed versus defendered?
So court-appointed lawyers are usually private lawyers who take on these cases. Defender Association, this is strictly what we do. And I think that basically because this is what we do, this is our model, this is our work and our structure, we are able to dispose of cases in a more expeditious way. We understand the legal issues. We have the personnel and staff that helps us process these cases and work them up and do exactly what we need to do in terms of disposing of them. So when this study was done by the MacArthur Foundation of how the Defender Association or how quickly the Defender Association disposes of its cases versus other lawyers in the system, we were really surprised to see the outcome of that, and it was a testament to our work. We go about our work in such a very meticulous way. We train our lawyers in specific ways and specific areas. Our lawyers rotate through various areas of the system until they gain the experience they need. And so the lawyers that are working on the more severe cases are some of the more experienced lawyers that they understand how to try cases and are not trying to figure it out, you know, as a first time.
When you say dispose of cases, that can sometimes mean taking a plea. What do you mean by that?
It could mean whether or not we brought a case to trial and it was complete and final, or someone has decided it's in their best interest to plead to the offense and that case is now complete.
Okay. One thing that caught my eye with respect to, you said that the members of your organization don't have pensions?
They don't.
So you are listed as a, what, nonprofit or quasi-government entity?
Yeah, we are a nonprofit organization.
Just period, nonprofit, period. So the reason I mention that, because we have, on a couple of occasions, brought in non-traditional city employees in our pension system at a much reduced cost if they had to go out on their own, either as individuals or the organization. You know, we got some of the primo benefits according to people that are walking around here. I think they're okay. I may want to look into that, because we actually thought when our pension, we had some conversations about opening up our pension system to external applicants, understanding that the more people you have in the system, paying into the system, it relieves some of the burden. So maybe we need to, and I wish we had a law department that was still here if they had to get out of it, we'll reach out. Because I think that, you know, the pension issue is probably something that we should be able to figure out a way to resolve. The parity issue, it's clear that you're not at parity, and we just have to figure out a way to make sure that the resources can be available at whatever degree we can ultimately get a consensus on. Yes, sure.
That's something I was also thinking about. If I'm correct, PHDC is also, going back to my time when I was in law department, I know their union, which is, I think, nineteen eighty-six, which represents RDA, Department of Public Security Development, and PHDC are all within pension plan.
Right.
And I know when we've gone through some of the reorganization attempts over the years, PHDC did have a pension from my recollection.
Correct.
So that may be a model to look at.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't aware that the Defender Association, although they are a private nonprofit, did not participate in our pension at all.
Well, actually, PHDC is technically a nonprofit.
Right, exactly.
But it was created by an ordinance of council, I think.
Right, but it's still private nonprofit. They can look at that.
Yeah, so we need to look at that, you know. See, at the minimum, that should be relatively easy to come to some conclusion. All right, thank you. I'm going to pass it on to my good friends, my colleagues.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Chair, recognizable, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, see, that pension problem you talked about was true for PCDC as well.
Okay.
We never were able to participate in that, and we, you know, there's a difference between city pensions and 401Ks that just start. Where do I begin?
I don't know.
Let me begin by saying, she is not the chief defender, she is my future law partner. When I get out of here, I'm going to law school, and I want to be with you. I have had the pleasure of getting a deeper dive into criminal justice and not only just what you are about, but what your agency is about, and I thank you for it. I must apologize, the next time I'm in a barber shop and I hear the boys talking about, yeah, I got a real attorney, oh, you got a PD, I'm going to have to say something.
Yes, you are.
I am, I'm going to have to say something. But the general idea that your staff don't come with their A-game is just not true. Although Sam tells me she used to handle you guys all the time, but Sam's exceptional.
I'm sure Sam has some stories.
Sam's exceptional. One of the things I want to dive into, I was at an event in West Philadelphia at the Enterprise Center. A well-dressed young man, still relatively young, came up to me and said, you don't remember me, do you? And I'm looking at him like, I always know if I owe you money or if the experience wasn't a good experience, but I couldn't place, I knew he was familiar, but come to find out, I had met him up at the lifers banquet up in Grattisford that they have annual. And he had approached me at that point, asking about and beginning to talk about this whole renewed juvenile lifer issue. To see him on the outside, and he told me what your office did for him, and it is amazing to me. Can you, for the record, talk about what that juvenile lifer's whole process now has meant for you and your staff?
Yeah, I'm going to touch a moment briefly, but I will give my first assistant, Jim McHugh, the liberty of talking about it because he's the one who created the unit. But I will tell you this, this is a historic moment. We have never seen people who were deemed to be relegated to prison for life come out and actually show that they have been making positive adjustments just because. They never thought they were going to see the light of day. And inside, they began to do things that are valuable to the prisons, like run their programs and mentor people that come in that were a little hot-headed, that needed to be controlled so that there's safety in that prison as well. The type of compassion that these individuals have been receiving, not just from lawyers and people in the community, but from the family of the victims, is amazing. And it really speaks to humanity in saying that they believe that people deserve second chances and that it's not going to be worth the human capital that we're wasting to keep them engaged, to keep them in prison forever. So I'm going to give Mr. McHugh a moment.
Mr. McHugh, give us some of the history of how it got started and what the local impact is.
Yes, Councilman Jones, the unit got started July 1st of last year after the United States Supreme Court had issued its two opinions in Miller and Montgomery mandating that juveniles that were sentenced to life without the possibility of parole had to be resentenced and given an opportunity to be released. And so we started our unit after the city, we negotiated with the city for funding for the unit, and we have, at this time, five attorneys and two mitigators that are working on 225 cases.
Two hundred and twenty-five cases.
And these men and women are housed throughout the state as far as Erie, Pennsylvania, twenty-one different prisons that we have visited. We build a rapport with our client. We have to go back thirty, forty, in some cases fifty, and in one case sixty years to find out what this individual has been doing in the prison, what they were doing on the streets of Philadelphia in the sixties and seventies when they were incarcerated for the rest of their lives. Of the 225 individuals that we represent, forty percent did not kill anybody. They were convicted of second-degree murder. They were accomplices to the crime, and they were sent away for life without the possibility of parole. So forty percent of the individuals that are coming out were not even convicted of first-degree murder. As Kier said, these individuals are leaders in the prison. We have unsolicited letters from the wardens of the state prisons, counselors, correction officers, telling us what an amazing individual, what amazing person they were in the prison. And they did all this without the hope of getting out, because the law was set for a long time that they would never see parole. It was life without the possibility of parole. A number of our clients that we have have gone on to get certificates in construction, HVAC, college degrees, things of that nature, doing all of this and helping within the prison without the possibility of getting it out. And so now that that has come forward, the sentencings that go forward in the Criminal Justice Center are really incredibly moving events where they get an opportunity to talk about the crimes that they've committed, apologize for the crimes that they committed. We see so much interaction between these individuals and the families of the victims.
I'll catch you on my second round. I'm going to turn the mic over to my chair, Mr. President.
Chair, recognizable, Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I have to say to Councilman Jones, I've been making that argument about that real lawyer versus defender for a long time, so.
Thank you, Councilman Greenlee.
Just on this pension thing, real quick. First of all, when you talk about the disparity in salaries, I don't know if you know, are some of those other cities, do those defenders get pensions? Because I would think that would make the disparity even wider between some of those other city.
Yeah. So many of them, those who are not nonprofit are a part of the county's government, so if that county's government provides a pension, they do. I know when I was the chief defender in Montgomery County, our lawyers did get pensions. So even in our state, we do have lawyers that do get pensions. I think the Defender Association of Philadelphia is the only defender association that does not because of our nonprofit status.
Because as the Council President, Councilwoman Parker and I were talking, you know, if we can get more contributors in the pension system, it's not a bad thing either. It would help you guys, but also might help the pension system, because as the retirees grow, you know, we wouldn't mind growing the contributors too, you know. One other thing I just wanted to mention, I know, I guess it was a number of years ago now, the defender started taking on a certain percentage of homicide cases.
Yes.
Before, they didn't. How does that work? Is there a certain breakdown or?
Yeah, so the Defender Association agreed to, and I believe dating back to what year? About 1995.
That far back, wow.
Yeah, to take on twenty percent of.
Twenty percent.
The homicide cases in the city of Philadelphia. And one of the things that that unit's work is really tremendous, there was a study done, a national study done on our office's work in that homicide unit that talked about that our model allowed for fair dispositions that rarely came back for, you know, for wrongful convictions. We do our work so carefully and deliberately, and we do a lot of training on that area. So that is something that we took on wholeheartedly. And we also, in our homicide, we do represent those who have been deemed to be capital cases, which the district attorney's office has said that they are going to enforce the death penalty.
Okay. Obviously, that's very important. How about caseload for your office? On average, what does a lawyer take on? And I guess, again, do you have any comparison to what others do?
Yeah, well, for the state of Pennsylvania, our office has the largest caseload, obviously. And we are the largest office in the state and the fifth largest in the country. So our caseloads are pretty high in comparison to the nation in terms of people who do this work or organizations that do this work. We have it, we don't have individual cases per attorney, but we can get that for you. I brought together the total cases, but I will definitely get that information to you. We have it available for us.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you for all the work you do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair, recognizable, Councilwoman Kuna Sanchez.
Thank you, good afternoon, and I'll try to be brief. Councilman Greenlee, who's been rushing us all afternoon. I want to thank you for all the work that you do. I really appreciate this motto, equal pay for equal justice. I think that's pretty cool. And I particularly want to appreciate the fact that I have a substantially larger number of folks who utilize your services than any of my council districts. We're usually very competitive, except when we are depleting resources, right? And then everybody's quick to say I'm the last one. So once again, council district number seven is number one. In talking about the, how do we get to parity? In your discussions with our budget office, is there a willingness to create a plan to get us close to parity? Does your budget reflect that this year?
Yes, so we recently gave a parity plan to the city, and it was a three-year plan to get us up to where the district attorneys are now. I don't know where they'll be in three years. And the mayor, and I will thank him very much for what he did, but he did provide some money to that first step towards parity, with the understanding that future parity may come.
So what's that, can you quantify that for me? What does that mean per person?
So per person, that would allow us to give our lawyers about an average of $6,000. Our lawyers, an average of $6,000, some, you know, lower levels and some at a higher levels, which would bring us some step closer towards our DA counterparts. We asked for a $2.4 million appropriation this year towards parity. The city did give us $1 million towards that, and we hope to be able to get some more so that we can provide the rest of the staff that we could not give any money to some parity as well. We really wanted to focus on those lawyers that we were losing in that third, fourth, I'm sorry, fourth, fifth, and sixth year.
Yeah, I know, this year five, yeah, year five is really huge.
And so we were able to give those lawyers something, but those lawyers who have been at our office for ten, twelve, thirteen years, we still were not able to provide them any relief.
Okay, so they're not going to get the six, or they only get the six?
They're not going to get, some of our, it's like about half of our staff would be able to get this, be able to get some money towards parity. The other half, the million dollars just didn't stretch that far.
So the additional 1.5 would get you where?
The additional 1.5 would allow us to provide all of our staff with some money towards parity. It is the first step in our three-year plan.
And what does year two ask for, and what does year three ask?
Year two, altogether over the three-year plan, is 6.5 million. So the first year, we asked for 2.5, the second year, two, and the third year, two.
Okay, two. Did you quantify for the mayor's team what, how many, much more services that gets them?
We gave the mayor's team everything we gave council in terms of, we provide services because this is what we do.
I know.
We really.
But I'm saying, in terms of quantifying, you were able to really, in a succinct way in your presentation, capture the savings?
Mm-hmm.
So can we correlate that extra 1.5? What does that get us in terms of savings and people serve, particularly under this new kind of scenario that we're living in? And I know you guys have started to work around some of the immigrant issues and so forth. Before the end of budget, if you could submit to the council president what that buys us to a certain degree, what that kind of investment will get us in terms of services?
Yes.
I think that that would be helpful in getting council to understand, you know, what kind of investment we want to make.
I will, and we did provide in our written submission what that would, what we projected in terms of the savings that would save the city.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it's on the last page.
On the last slide?
I believe. And if you just have the slide presentation, I apologize.
Yeah, no, I have your page of your presentation.
Yeah, we might have.
I was looking for that one here.
You know what? I know we had drafted it. We can. You know what, I know we had drafted it, and we can get it for you, because we did kind of do a projection as to what that would buy you in terms of services and savings to the city. In addition to us keeping experienced lawyers so that we can do all these things, we did put in a projected number of what that would buy you. Actually, I'm sorry. So we have it here, and this is, we project that the increased salaries will increase our retention rate by 20%, saving over $800,000. More experienced lawyers also increase our ability to intervene pretrial, which is some of the reform efforts around bail, and that would also produce a huge savings in our criminal justice costs, especially our prison costs.
What page is that? What page is that?
This, it may not be in your packet.
When I looked at page 13 where you have your pay parity, I don't see those numbers, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, if you can submit that.
We will submit it.
I think that would be real helpful. I think our public safety chair here has a very ambitious goal about how do we close down a prison as opposed to build a new one. And I know that this is an important component of it. And I know that the situation is getting more complicated as we talk about aspiring citizens and others, and I'd like to, I know that you're doing, you're being as proactive as you can. I'd like to see how we better support that. You know, and New York and other folks are doing amazing things as it relates to some of the legal work there and I want to see us at least, obviously, we're not New York, but at least up to par, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair Recognizer is Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Many of the questions I initially had have been answered. I want to thank you, Ms. Bradford-Grey, for your testimony as well as providing the opportunity for members of council and staff to tour the public defender's office. I'm not sure if everyone was as familiar, and I talked about this earlier when another department was testifying, that you provide expungement on a daily basis. In fact, I had a constituent today, I referred to the public defender's office regarding an expungement issue. One other thing, and I saw in your testimony, you talked about a lot of different initiatives that you've done, and I think your testimony is quite explicitly representative of return on savings that the city receives from the work that the public defender's office does. I know Councilman Greenlee's been a longtime proponent of the public defender's office. Did you talk a little bit about the Donify app that you have?
Yes.
Maybe give a little perspective, because I think you've been very creative in how you use technology and how you really maximize the limited resource that your office has.
One of the great things about my job is I get to work with some amazing people, so I will say that I have made some really great hires. And my chief adult social worker, Curtis Watkins, is in the back. He actually went after this opportunity when he knew that the things that were happening in court were because of lack of information at the fingertips of the judge to make vital decisions as to how to shuffle people back into the community supported. So when we saw that this woman had created an app that brought to our fingertips all of the different services in our city by geographical area, we wanted in because we knew our lawyers needed that. Fox 29 News did a story on this opportunity. They did a story based on the creativeness, the innovation of it, but also on how it saves on jail, prison time. It reduces prison time by 80%. One of our lawyers talked about how she was able to get housing for her client in two days as opposed to the 30-day delay that it would have taken ordinarily because of the information that she had on her app and the phone calls that she made to get our client into that housing, so that the judge could give an ankle monitor to that person with assurances that they would be housed and be able to make it to court. So I think that that was bringing technology into our realm of services, bringing access to services to people, but also empowering them to make some of their own choices and work on their own problems so that the system doesn't have to do it for them, is what we're trying to do.
And I mean, that just shows another example of how your office has been very creative and, yes, you are there to represent someone that has been charged with a possible crime, but also the fact that that person at that situation may need other services and the fact that too often is not the right opportunity to bring that connection or provide those services and the fact that you are using that in a way, in a holistic way, is really helping to address public safety and some of the issues we have in our city. And as a former DA, I don't have much hair anymore, but I had some hair back then, I remember the great training that the public defender's office provided. I often felt it was better than the training that the district attorney's office received. Now, I came from another office before I came in DA's office, but I've always been impressed with the level of skill, expertise, dedication, and lawyering that the PD's office has provided over the years and that's even been enhanced through your service and your new role and the role of your staff, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair Recognizer, Councilman Jones.
Once again, Sam disagrees, but what can I say? Can you touch on, while we have you here in your presentation, you, the courts, and the district attorney office all gave really comprehensive evaluations and presentations, and we thank you for that, it allows us to make better decisions. But while we have you, and switching a little bit to your chair of the Justice Reform, where in your role within the Defender's Association? Bail reform, and if we look at, per se, a Washington model or a New Jersey, which I like to call bail-light model, the social service component that you're already doing and how you managed to start to inculcate that into your services, how do you see that evolving?
So, thank you for that question, I think that's a great question. One of the things that our work allows us to do is understand the needs of people. Some of the times, we are the first person to understand that someone has mental health issues or depression issues, or whatever it is that's contributing to them coming into our system. So our work and our role right now as partners in reducing our prison population is to address those needs and coach people to understand how that plays a part in their behavior. And our social workers, under the MacArthur initiatives, the early bail review that has been talked about extensively today, the lifting that the defender do, I don't think goes unnoticed to many of other people. We make initial contact with those people by going up to the prison and talking to them, getting a long history of information from them. Our paralegal then comes back and provides that information to the lawyer who makes phone calls to family members or service providers or church members or employers, whoever that is. Then, our social services unit makes one-on-one contact with them to bring them in to make sure that they are supported, connected, and they get everything they need so that they are not out there reoffending. That understanding and that snapshot of what we are doing is providing us a basic understanding of what is available to people that is already in their neighborhoods, what have they missed the mark on getting connected to because they just don't know about it, and how can we steer them into those directions? We have seen that many of the people that we represent with that model in terms of getting them out of jail pretrial, have not come back. They've made it to court and they are being more responsible about their lives now that they know that they're supported. They feel like they've been treated fairly, the process has been explained to them, whereas before, they'd show up on a screen, some would stay in. If they got out at some point, they would get out with no understanding of their needs. They'd go back to their community, sometimes even more desperate than they came in. If they stayed into the system over 30 days, if they had any public benefits that were state-funded, those benefits were shut off and then the city would have to pick up that tab while they're in the prison, which we at our Criminal Justice Reform Committee hearing found out through the prison systems that that's a $65 million a year price tag. So I think that this is smarter on crime for the areas that we are seeing that are not necessarily criminal justice issues, but they are social issues that contribute to behavior. I would really like, hope that one day we can narrow our net in our criminal justice system, put more money into those professionals that are designed or trained to deal with those issues better and use our system for real things that threaten our safety. That is what it was designed for, and we have expanded our correction officer's role to be social workers. We've expanded our police officer's role, right? And so I think that when we're looking, when we're utilizing people such as our social workers to help us understand the people that we represent, we have a better understanding of their needs and a better opportunity to present it to decision-makers. So I know that's the model that can help us figure out how we can do that in terms of placing conditions of release versus giving bail. It's been done in other states, and in fact, a federal judge in Texas just deemed their bail system to be unconstitutional. So this is coming, and I'm glad that the Criminal Justice Reform Committee is exploring this because it is spreading like wildfire. I know Councilman Jones has immersed himself in criminal justice reform issues and he is seeing across the nation, this is more prevalent and it can be done. We are starting on something right now, and I'm not going to negate the efforts that we're making in our MacArthur initiatives, but we can go a lot further. We just have to understand what it is we're trying to do and how it fits into our system.
Mr. President, I rest my case.
Well, I think at the end of the day, the jury will make the appropriate decision and grade an A-plus to this particular panel.
Thank you so much.
As it relates to, thank you.
And I must say, I do thank you very much for keeping Criminal Justice Reform local. We do understand what's going on on our national level and I think it's going to be up to individual states to make sure that reform happens because it's so important. The stakes are way too high for people, they can't overcome some of the things that happen in here. And so when we're intentional about what we do with people, I think we make better decisions about our safety. So thank you so much, Councilman.
Thank you.
And I want to make one more observation. We talked, a lot of people talked about stealing their staff. I think one of our staff members has joined you, Council President, Jessica Sanchez. So I will speak to the testimony.
I just got reprimanded because, for whatever reason, you know you draw blanks every now and then, and I called a lawyer upstairs to ask the question, and then I looked at, where's she at? No, she's not back there, Jessica, and I said, "Man, what? I got a personnel staff that used to work there, right?" And she reminded me of that, right? So, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony, and thank you for your public service, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, we're going to go into recess until what time? Till 5:00 and we will have testimony from the public.
I forgot to say a lot of stuff, but, thank you, Councilman Greenlee.
Thanks, I appreciate it.